We're not drinking that. I didn't know. Got a couple of them. No, this is unfortunate.
Ask my. So. Well, yeah. I use. The Constitution. So. But yeah. All right. Yeah. It's gonna be. I'm. I'm growing in here, but you know. Oh, no. I can't be one of those. A lot of it's. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I think I got. And then, yeah. Yeah.
How can somebody do this? Sure. You know, you don't have a problem with that. Look at your answer. What I can do is help. I'll be here. That's. Yeah. I mean. I just. This has got long enough for you to stretch over there. Don't you need it?
No, my voice is loud enough.
Ready. You're sitting.
Nice.
Yes, a surprise. I know where he's coming. Medical. I am. Just. Before we.
No, that's. But yeah. But I don't think it goes on. I've seen some. Thank you. There are few friends I would really love to see. I know that. Where you go. Anyone else? No, I'm good. In a little bit. Yeah, I'll never expect that. That right? It's never. Okay. Do you like dark talk? You gotta try her. I'm sure you have. Um. So good. I guess we got like the little nipples. I love it. I love the pretty cut. Thank you. Pretty used to being out of the habit. I feel like.
I'm. Council, council. Oh, he does.
Oh. I've been. About very high. It was. Very. No, jump down. The thing is.
Yes. I'm sure. My. So. You're. They don't got the question. Because the plan of each. Yes.
Uh. I'm trying to be the man, you know. And we did. Yeah. Yeah. I did. I hope. Right. That's something I wanted to hear, right? But. It's more. I'm not looking. It was. Yes. That's definitely. Yeah. Fair. But I. Your. Not. Okay. The. Had. You have. So. Five. But they. Simply. I'm. Sorry.
The lesions due to by and we didn't make a state or a member. And so. Which is stands. Nation. I don't know. It is called. Literally. And that is.
I wish to announce that forty eight hour notice is required of the open public meetings act which email the as three part five. Co star and the new co star on December the thirteenth of twenty twenty two. That a copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and that a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. As a side note, as a courtesy to the public, this meeting may be attended via Zoom. If for any reason, the Zoom portion of this meeting fails or is disconnected, the in person meeting will continue and action can and will be taken. Mr. Marco.
Present.
Okay, there you are. Hey, Meredith and Mr. Noble. Here, Mr. Gubatose.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here. Good evening, everybody, and happy Flag Day, June fourteenth. I'll just make a couple of comments, so we'll go right into the agenda for tonight. Again, we welcome disagreement, and we think it helps us think through things, but our voice can be constructive. And ask everybody to gauge their tone going forward. We're all neighbors and we have set up some rules of engagement. Sometimes we stretch them before we will continue to improve that. So I'm going to go right to the welcome again. Here on Flag Day, it is the eleventh day of the year. And we will continue to focus on our opportunities and challenges as a borough. The first thing on the agenda is the public hearing, and before we do that, I just want to mention that Chris Clinton, Chris, could you raise your hand? Is representing our CFO Anthony Menino, who actually had a bit of a medical situation that he had to attend to. So Chris is Chris works for us and is pretty knowledgeable the borough's finances and should be able to field questions as we go through the budget here. Now, which we will start now. So the budget hearing on the introduced local municipal budget, we have a resolution twenty twenty three one seventy seven adoption or amendment to the twenty twenty three municipal budget that we'll look at in a bit, but I'll just kind of take kind of index us through. First, we I will make them. I'll just kind of take you through what we're going to be doing tonight. I'll make a motion in a moment to open the hearing. We'll do a roll call vote, and then we will entertain any questions or comments on the introduced budget, which was introduced on, was it May twenty fourth? Great. May ten, I'm sorry. Questions will be answered by the administrator, the CFO, and we'll ask each at that point after questions or comments, if any speakers want to conclude their remarks, that's perfectly fine. So that's kind of the the drill will go through. And at that point, too, Mr. Ferrinback will make some comments at the end. So first thing I wanted to do is make a motion to open the public hearing on the introduced budget of May tenth. Do I have a second?
Mr. Marco?
Yes. Yes.
To give Toby.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yeah.
Mayor Fox.
Okay. The public hearing on the introduced twenty twenty three budget is now open. For all those who wish to comment on the budget or ask questions, please come to the microphone and state clearly your name and address and proceed with making any having any questions or statements that you have. Again.
I didn't hear Jane Denoble's name called.
It was called, and I did say yes, but thank you.
Um, and we will have the administrator CFO, in this case, Chris, answer any question. So any questions or comments on the introduced budget? Yes.
In. Uh, Tom, Jay, Colin, six, four, third avenue. So tonight you're going to approve, you're proposing to approve the budget that was presented on May tenth. You're not looking to amend the budget? I'm trying to understand what your your game plan is. Are you approving the budget from May tenth with the one point five million dollars from surplus?
We have a the budget hearing has to be on the budget we introduced on May tenth.
Perfect.
That's the budget here.
Well, I would pose it based upon the large sum of money being taken from the surplus. There were funds that were taken from the surplus last year, which were not put back. If we continue with this unsustainable level of spending, we're going to be in a real big problem, and the economy is not getting any better. So I think it's only going to get worse. Is the police car included in this budget, which was in May tenth, Mr. Fernbach?
The answer is yes.
Well, we don't need to believe, you know, it's it's time to start cutting appropriations and managing money like you would manage your household. If you don't have the money to send your kid to Harper, you may have to send him to Brookdale. But you don't go take the money from your savings account. You have to start running this place lean. The uh, the police cars in. Okay, so you right now, and I have to ask Chris Clinton, Chris, do you have a reasonable expectation that you can put back the million five?
That is something that Anthony has actually been working on, a plan that I believe was sent to the council of things that we're looking to do this year, next year, and so on. If you do look at the amendment, there is an amendment in there that is reducing how much of the surplus to be used. So that is part of the plan, too.
Okay, but but that's not what you're voting on right now. You're voting on taking the bill, right?
We're having a hearing on the introduced budget.
It's just funny. Okay, great. And now.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Yes. Just to make this clear.
Yep.
There may be some other ideas floating around. They will be discussed at some other time. Right now, the discussion is on the local municipal budget in accordance with the provisions of the local budget law.
I understand that. And, you know, I know everyone's working on it, but I just want to say that it's June. We're halfway through the year. Okay, it's not the time to work on it. The time was January, February. That I'm going to conclude my question, my questioning, but I would advise you a hundred percent do not approve that ridiculous budget with taking all that money from our savings account. It's very scary. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
We'll come. Sorry.
Okay, you're good. I don't like that. Some seconds will come inside. Uh, Nancy Mallow, she worked on the news.
I concur with everything Mr. Colin said. On you're not spending your money, you're spending mine. And interesting that finally we have someone from firm that is our CFO. It is a whole other incident, but I did take issue and would like extreme detailed clarification on the page of the budget that mentioned um, the salaries for the beach utilities. I don't know. Some ridiculous amount of money. I think it was over a million dollars. And then it show social security, which is our matching point. Um, which social security being in six point two percent. None of this added up. Even if you take away the social security is only on a hundred thousand dollars per employee. And where I define our employees hugely and grossly overpaid. Um, we don't have that any making over that amount of money. So I seek clarification on that amount of money that you're claiming is for social security. I find it off, unbalanced. And.
To clarify, the social security in the beach or or in total.
Right there on the page that showed the beach money.
Beach. Okay, I just wanted to clarify because.
Yeah, I didn't look at anything else that maybe you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, clarify the the beach salary and wages is the million five oh five five hundred.
I mean, that's just absolutely. What do you pay those people? Those gate checkers made nothing? So again, none of that makes sense.
And Greg, I don't know if you have a social update, but I'm not sure on social security. I'm looking at this, the seventy, I think that's the statute we're requiring for that seventy five grand. Can leave it that.
Okay.
Okay.
As a point of order, Mr. Mayor, are we allowed to try to answer any of the residents?
Well, I think that's what Greg and the CFO are here to do.
But well, a significant question was raised about one point five million of salaries. Can someone answer that?
Ms. Meadows. The salaries in the beach utility include not just lifeguards, not just beach checkers, not just the sort of seasonal full time people that are associated. But it also includes allocations for personnel in the Department of Public Works, personnel in the Department of Police, and allocations that are set forth in a salary ordinance according to a document that I submitted to you approximately four weeks. Okay.
I find it again, no breakdown by by the CFO. I find it unrealistic that total is one point five million. And so and again, six point two percent that we have to wait to move out on that.
Okay.
I appreciate bringing that warrants out some tension. The volume of employees and who writes off from each utility or the salary, I have requested that as ordinance be redone.
Well, I will just make this one mention that not with Mr. Clinton here, but with Mr. Menino, I raised the same question regarding the social security allocation versus the salaries and wages. And his response to me was that he had gone through the appropriate calculation and that the monies that were allocated for the purposes of not just social security, but also Medicare responsibilities that the numbers were appropriate. So I did see what you saw. I raised the question and the response I received from the CFO, Mr. Minino, was that he had gone through the calculation, and it was his opinion that they were correct.
So I appreciate your setup eyes thoroughly. Um, and I actually was going to pick on the fact that you said social security is both social security and Medicare. Because if it's including Medicare, then you're in the seven point six five percent, not six point two percent.
Yes.
But again, an omission on the CFO could spot you were. So again, I'm going to say that quite honestly, if you're going to flabbergast people with the budget, that number is too low. It needs to be worked. But thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Prashin McGuire, six, ten, bring the app. Um, I just wanted to say for the record, based on how understanding this so other folks can maybe grasp it the way I needed it to understand it. The anticipated surplus is like a savings account. And if I say anything that is wrong, please stop me. So I'm not confusing anyone. The anticipated surplus is like a savings account. In order for tax dollars to not get raised, we borrow out of that fund and then replenish it. Last year, we borrowed about a million, and we only replenished seven hundred thousand. So we're shy three hundred thousand of replenishing it back into our savings. And now we want to borrow a million five. How are we going to fully pay that back if we're already shy three hundred thousand? And if we can't borrow from there, then that means our taxes are going to be up because we have to pay that million five. So spend is the problem. And I think, you know, based on the bills list, which I'll talk about when that time comes, that's where our problem lies. So I would like to definitely focus on how we're spending our money, how we get more conservative with our dollars, period. And I just wanted to do that for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Um, this is Rinda Duffy, Rickville, Ringley Avenue. This is a question and a comment at the same time. Have we finished negotiations for the public workers department in our town?
The.
Okay.
So I'm going.
Is the anticipated somewhat raised in the budget?
Yes.
And how much is that?
That is a matter of contract negotiation.
So so that's already put into the budget.
What I'm saying is, is the provision has been made for covering whatever additional costs might result from those negotiations.
Okay, I just wanted to know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll go to the big board. I don't see anybody on the big board.
I don't either.
Okay. I will then make a motion to close the hearing. So I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Marco? Meredith?
You're on mute.
Oh, wait, I see her.
Yes.
Mister Noble. Yes, Mr. Gubatose.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yeah.
Mayor Fox.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Ferrinback is going to discuss issues identified during the last few weeks since the introduction. The governing body, myself included, have continued study of the budget, discussion on the budget, and he'll take us through a short discussion on that. I don't know how short it'll be, but we'll get up to him.
If I may.
But first, you may want to get the microphone closer, so keep the things together. First, I have some preparatory comments to make, and I hope my comments are supported more or less by all five members of the governing body. I'm hopeful the governing body will consider amending the introduced budget. Um, this anticipated budget amendment is the result of a consensus building process having been reached over a number of individual different perspectives and proposals which have been pushed forth. This difficult but necessary amendment, whatever its final form, should be viewed as a position of the entire governing body and not just a couple or a few members. Over the past few weeks, there have been individual discussions among governing body members following meetings with various departments, including fire and first aid, greater financial research to better understand the elements of the budget and the demands on this budget to provide services to the residents as expected. These have been conducted by staff and governing body members alike. As the result of this added research, several conditions have become clear. Although in a stable position today, there was a common concern on the part of all regarding the long term strength of the borough's budget and financial condition. This is embodied in the anticipation of surplus as a consistent revenue source, as has been commented on by several members of the public. There were also oversights by me when structuring the introduced budget that became clear after the introduction. These needed to be corrected if the budget were to be accurate. There were a few minor added revenue sources that could and so should be included in the budget. Many of these identified changes require a major budget amendment that triggers a public notice, publication of.
publication of, and a hearing on a budget amendment. As the result of this deeper understanding of the budget and potential issues with the long-term health of the municipality, I and the Chief Financial Officer have proposed and strongly support that there should be less reliance on anticipated surplus to increase the ability of surplus to rebuild during the upcoming year and years. Reducing an anticipated revenue such as the anticipated surplus has a similar effect on the final tax level amount as increasing an expenditure. It increases the tax levy. Recognize that the property tax levy is actually a residual or an end result of comparing appropriations and all of the revenue. So that the final number ends up being the property tax levy. This recommendation that we are making would result in a four hundred thousand dollar reduction in anticipated surplus. That would be taking the anticipated surplus from what was in the introduced budget of one million five hundred thousand and reducing it to the level of one million one hundred thousand. There have been suggestions that that amount should be reduced even more. The problem with that is that causes even a greater increase on the property tax that each and every one of us have to end up paying. It is not necessary from my perspective that one take an entire bite out of the apple at one time, but that one take what is a measured reasonable reduction in anticipated surplus now take actions that I will refer to later um to uh gain greater control over operations and expenditures. And if necessary, next year, maybe take a much smaller bite if that bite is needed at all. In addition, as the result of this deeper examination, there is an additional set of appropriations that should be funded as we now know these accounts were underfunded in the introduced budget. These total a net amount of ninety five thousand dollars or thereabouts. The net effect of these changes increased appropriations and reduced anticipated surplus to the overall tax levy um is about four hundred and uh forty one thousand dollars uh over the introduced budget. The um increase in the tax levy under this proposed amendment would result in uh an additional cost of approximately nine hundred and forty one thousand dollars over the uh tax levy of two thousand twenty-two, so that the net um percentage increase in the tax levy would be eleven point six percent. Both I as the administrator and the CFO strongly support this amendment and strongly urge members of the governing body to support it as an entire entity. We hope that the entirety of the governing body will vote to introduce this amendment, which would have its own public hearing at a future date chosen by the governing body, but not later than the next regular meeting, which is one I would expect it would be scheduled. Lastly, a common position of the governing body members is that to justify such an increase in the municipal tax levy requires it to be accompanied by rigorous analysis and management on the appropriation side of the budget and development of appropriate other funding sources. With this said, I as the interim Borough Administrator am requesting the governing body to introduce this proposed amendment that is before them and has been circulated to them and schedule a public hearing on this amendment for the next council meeting on the twenty eighth of June, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, great. Um, at this point, I feel, is anybody on the council have any comments? I I know that the council has seen the deep, the detail of the the changes that have been proposed.
Yeah.
Um, we'll go through that, we'll get those, i- if voted on, if voted favorable, get those out to the public and that will be the basis of the hearing that we have on the, hopefully, the twenty eighth of June. Um, any comments by the council at this point? I have. Sure. Yep.
So uh I guess my very first question to Mr. Farinbach, you mentioned that we, assuming we were to move forward with approving the uh, you know, moving forward to the event, you said at our June twenty eighth council meeting, does that time, timing give us sufficient time to get out tax bills and whatever other uh communications that are necessary in time?
Um, we looked at the statutory requirements for publication, the ability of various newspapers to be able to carry it, and what utility would be of having a public hearing on Thursday the twenty second or Friday twenty-third. It had minimal benefit and it would be disruptive and it would not occur at the normal time of the meeting, thereby possibly denying certain people in the public the ability to be able to speak on it. So um it could require an extension of the grace period by a few days, but that you do not believe will create any operational problems or costs for the municipality.
Okay, thank you. I, so I I actually have a parent statement I'll, I'll read at the end of our week dialogue, but um, but I, I do wanna say, I, I'm on record as already saying for a few months that I've had major concerns with the budget process, the timing of it. I said in our last council meeting, I had major reservations around the one point five million of anticipated surplus. I'll get to some of those, some of those reservations in a moment, but what I'd like to start out this discussion saying is that uh I have very much appreciated Mr. Farinbach's support uh just over the past really few weeks, when, when the council finally had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Farinbach, with the mayor and with our CFO. Uh, but given the fact that budget process should have started at the end of January, officially started on March eighth with a workshop for the public and really didn't pull the, the council and the public in, we sat on that March eight budget, I think it was six weeks, that you may recall was a twenty percent proposed tax increase. Um, nothing occurred, I asked a lot of questions, but there was no point in answering my questions because it was a significant effort underway to change that budget. So the council really didn't get engaged in discussing what I'll call a real budget for the residents until mid to late April, when another workshop was held. Uh, so to echo one of the comments made earlier from, from the public, I, I'm very disappointed that the process took as long as it did to engage the council. Uh, and I, and I'm very critical of the process itself. But uh where we're at now, uh I, I wanna make sure that I give appropriate credit, especially to Mr. Farinbach. And the reason for that is because he has been very diligent in trying to answer all of my questions, I would say he has answered all of my questions related to twenty twenty-three allocation, that's the budget we're talking about now, appropriations. Where I have run into challenges is, as I've grown to understand the twenty twenty-three spend, I, I have been less able to understand the twenty twenty-two baseline. So think of it this way, when I'm, as a council member, when I'm looking at uh the twenty twenty-three spend, we go department by department, salaries projected, overtime projected, assumptions related to the cost. And Mr. Farinbach has done a wonderful job making me comfortable with twenty twenty-three appropriations. Now, that's good and bad, the good news is, um, I understand it much better. The bad news is that the twenty twenty-three appropriations are very high. And as you heard, right now, we're discussing a, a municipal tax levy increase that'll be eleven point six percent. Um, so I, I, none of us are pleased, I, I think I can speak for the council, we're residents here and none of us wanna see a significant tax increase. But I guess what we've done is we've identified the problem, the problem is we're spending too much money. We have to stop spending this much money. The other very important piece, I, I don't know how much I'll be able to engage you, sir, just because you may or may not be that close to the assumptions underlying our ability to replenish the anticipated surplus. But a very, very significant issue that we've also been discussing has been just that, the question of whether or not we can replenish this money. Think of it this way, if we're gonna tax all of us an increase of twelve percent, if we're also spending money from our surplus because we, let's say the tax increase is insufficient to cover our ongoing spend, the problem with that is our, uh, our dipping into surplus just creates more of a deficit, people in the audience have already said this, uh, you can't dip into your savings forever. Sooner or later, you run out, it is not a sustainable way to build a budget. Mr. Farinbach mentioned moments ago, I'm one of the council members at least who's been questioning openly um how much we should take from anticipated use and anticipated surplus to borrow from our, our funds. As recently as last week, uh I had a meeting with Mr. Farinbach uh a- and Mr. Menino, our CFO and the mayor. And um, Mr. uh Menino, and this is where I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I, I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but Mr. Menino took me through um his best estimate at the time uh of our ability to replenish surplus and, and his best estimate was around seven hundred thousand dollars, similar to the amount we replenished last year. But now, we're now talking about using an anticipated surplus of one point one million. My last conversation with our CFO was, he could get me pretty comfortably to set a hundred thousand, say a hundred fifty thousand, but there was still a good three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars that he could not, you know, walk me through. And the real conversation, so everyone knows, between me and, and this group, focused on, well, what other measures are there, you know, I mean, obviously, setting a budget is, is guesswork. So, I mean, it, it could be variances high or low by the end of the year, no one has that perfect crystal ball. So we could fluctuate, we could fluctuate down and not spend any surplus, we could fluctuate upward and potentially spend more surplus. My, my discussion with this group was, well, what can we do if we agree to move quickly to adopt a budget? And the answer from Mr. Farinbach, I didn't wanna put words in your mouth, correct me if I'm wrong, was it would give him as our business administrator the chance to begin to aggressively manage the budget. Once we adopt it, we can enter the numbers into our financial systems and we can start to hold our spend accountable via our, our employees, so um that, number one, I, I've grown to trust Mr. Farinbach's judgment, number two. To me, that's a better answer than what we have now, which is, I don't feel we're managing spend particularly well. Uh, so I am anxious to, one, not delay the, the borough uh in terms of moving, being able to move forward and um, and two, to really begin a more aggressive management. Um, I've also talked to the mayor, Mr. Farinbach uh and others about a, a motion I plan to make in a little, in a little bit uh that is going to request very specific uh next steps from our administration to help us better understand how we can more aggressively manage our spend as we go forward. Um, so before I get to any kind of formal statement, I do have some questions. Mr. Farinbach, I warned you about this one uh an hour or two ago, but first and foremost, I've been talking to you and the mayor for a month or more about the different um commissions in the borough, different volunteer organizations in particular. Uh, yeah, I've got what I think are appropriate, comfortable answers budget-wise related to Sylvan Lake, Fletcher Lake commissions. I'm trying to think, there's been, oh, the fire department, uh, one, one that I have and we've together wrestled with is the first aid contribution. In this budget, i- in the budget we just are deciding not to pursue, as well as the amended budget we're considering, um, the current fund has forty thousand dollars uh assigned, as I understand it, to the uh first aid contribution.
Yes, and it's a fourteen percent increase over last year's appropriation level.
Understood. You have, yeah, I, I, you know, I'm speaking only for myself, but in the past, other council members have agreed with me that we wanna make sure we're able to support any legitimate budget requests they make. And I know they presented to us a request with supporting budget information for fifty-five thousand. So there is a fifteen thousand gap, as I understand it right now, between what they've requested and what we have in the current fund. Set aside.
In per hour.
Correct. Okay. Per hour conversations, um, you have asked, you and the mayor have asked them to come back to you with a breakdown of how much time they devote to beach-related activities. I, I understand that to mean there might be a possibility to, to close that fifteen thousand dollar gap by perhaps utilizing some of the beach utilities funding to support first aid.
Correct, yeah.
So, so by the time we actually move forward to make, making a vote, uh, I just wanna make sure that I'm very clearly stating to the public that unless uh unless I'm told that their budget is somehow flawed, I wanna make sure, me as representing my vote for this council, I wanna make sure that we're fully supporting the first aid's operating needs, I don't want to ask them to dip into any surplus they might have, I've talked to them and they told me they reduced their surplus effectively uh three of the last three years, so I, I know that's one of the outstanding questions, how much surplus remains? To me, that, that is not relevant to me personally, uh, I wanna make sure that we, the borough, are supporting their operating budget. Any alternative, if we were to eliminate our volunteer first aid, any alternative would cost the borough significantly greater dollars. So I, I wanna make sure I, I'm there.
I, I'm, I'm fully aware of um your position on that, I've indicated to you uh that in reviewing it with Mr. Menino, uh, we believe there is uh sufficient flexibility within the beach utility um to be able to um meet that target of an additional fifteen thousand dollars for first aid squad. But as I've also indicated to you, uh, the mayor has attempted on a number of occasions to be able to sit down and meet with the first aid squad. Um, but I think that goes back to easily a month or more ago, um, probably about six weeks, seven weeks ago. Um, uh, we had a meeting scheduled approximately four weeks ago, um, they canceled it about ten minutes before the meeting was supposed to take place. So we weren't able to have a meeting with them until last Friday night at about six o'clock, seven o'clock. Um, and um, we were able to discuss various aspects of their budget. Some aspects we were not able to discuss, uh, there's some information that they're going to be supplying us um to be able to justify their desire to be able to uh have a, an appropriation from the beach utility and we're still awaiting that information.
Okay. I have a, I, I have an ongoing concern that I've continued to express that uh here we are talking about increasing our spend, our taxes twelve percent and possibly the equivalent of another five percent of taxes in deficit funding. Um, so if, if we were to, I'm being extreme.
Clarify that last point.
Yeah, I understand point. I'm going to verify it, I hope for all to understand. This is where I'm gonna come back to our CFO's. This is where I'm gonna come back to our CFO's substitute, but our CFO last week told me we could, he believed replenish seven hundred thousand. By coincidence, that's a number I was using three weeks ago, because that is the same number we were able to replenish in twenty twenty two. So I started with that as a baseline, questioning one point five million. With Mr. Farinbach's assistance, we both questioned the CFO and last week as he built up the components of replenishment. He said he got us up back to seven hundred thousand, not to one point one million, certainly not to one point five million. So in my mind, as I left that meeting and, and there's a little variable that has changed since that meeting that I learned of today. So this is why I'm reserving my question for our, our accounting firm. But when I left that meeting, I was still under the impression that if I were to approve, and if this council were to approve one point one million of deficit, of anticipated surplus. That, that might lead us to drawing down our surplus an additional four hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying I'm against doing that, because the alternative is raising everyone's taxes. The difference that four hundred thousand ru- roughly creates would be an increase of approximately five percentage points in your taxes. Mr. Mayor, to try to clarify, so adding five percent to what we're currently at eleven point six. It was rounding to twelve plus five is rounding to seventeen. If I push really hard, if the council push really hard to to not deficit fund or not have any, you know, hopefully have the best odds of not deficit funding. We'd be talking to you about a seventeen percent tax increase. So right now, as I sit here, I'm, I'm inclined to encourage us using the one point one million of anticipated surplus. I just wanna be very clear that there's, unless I have an update from the CFO, I just wanna be very clear that that could mean in order to minimize some of the tax burden on our residents. We might be deficit funding another three or four hundred thousand dollars this year on top of the three hundred thousand we deficit funded last year. And I'm gonna state the obvious, but that's not a really good way to, to run a budget.
It's a sustainable model.
It is not.
Mr. Gubatose, just to provide you a counter. And you indicated earlier that in various years, these things fluctuate. And they can go up, they can go down. And I've seen that happen in many jurisdictions I've worked in. Like yesterday afternoon, I believe it was, I circulated to all of the governing body members a revised surplus rebuilding analysis for current beach and sewer. That was significantly more positive than the sort of off the top of his head, off the shoulder estimates that he was providing us when he was meeting with you, the mayor and I. And that was the point at which, as I recall, he was coming up with seven hundred and eighty thousand. And, and then the one that came through yesterday that was circulated, he seemed to suggest that the shortfall in in surplus, according to the more recent analysis, which I have not been able to speak to him about today because of what the mayor indicated. Indicated that I think it was something like a sixty five thousand dollar.
Sixty five.
Short fall. And so our varying ways of looking at this, I am not going to take a firm position. I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. And I think the reasonable approach to this is that one point one million, while it does foist a four hundred thousand dollar additional burden on all of us taxpayers. Is a step in the correct direction. Is more reasonable and definitely less chancy than a one point five million dollar anticipation of fund balance. And that if we are able to take the actions that I believe are possible in the year two thousand twenty three, to go into the year two thousand twenty four. Which end up focusing on issues of efficiency and tightening the belt and trying to identify priorities and only spending on priorities. That we can improve that picture a good deal. And improving that picture a good deal could mean that there is not a need for an additional bite out of the apple in two thousand twenty four. But again, that's gonna depend on management and it's going to depend on discipline.
Agree with everything you said. Thank you. The one area, and now I will officially turn to you, sir. Even you, Mr. Farinbach, said you're, you're still not clear on how that analysis from last week where off the cuff. We were at seven, I had seven seventy, you say seven, seven eighty. How that became one million oh thirty six, because as you say, we're sixty four thousand. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, we're getting into kind of detail that would probably make a lot of your eyes roll back, but I left last week's meeting with the CFO believing that there was a reasonable chance we were gonna be deficit funding four hundred thousand dollars above and beyond the tax increase that, that we would, that we would vote for, that was close to twelve percent. That four hundred thousand concerned me. I received a, a notification yesterday was Mr. Farinbach, that, that the new replenishment number, the, the new under replenishment, instead of being potentially four hundred thousand, was now only sixty four thousand. But the, but the exhibit that I received, I did not understand. And I, I did reach out to you and Mr. Menino and ask for an explanation. What changed? I didn't see any changes. It was, it was relatively unclear, at least to my relatively untrained eye. But I, I'd like to ask, do you know if we could piece together the, the million dollars of replenishment, like where would that come from?
I would actually have to do more research into that. I was not included in the rebuild process, I'm sorry to say. The best thing I could say that I, after today's meeting, now that I know it's something that is being questioned, I can look into it and get back. Then I would have a little bit more research and knowing of what the actual numbers came from. But I'm sorry that I don't have that answer today.
Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Menino was unexpectedly unable to come to it.
Now, I know, I, I did ask that question in, in email yesterday, at least, but I guess what I'm trying to tell everybody, we're gonna vote one way or the other, if people are gonna vote yes or no, I'm inclined to support this amended budget. But until someone explains this to me, and I've been saying this for a pretty long time now, weeks, if not, if not two months. I'm inclined to, to support this amended budget believing in my heart that we're at risk closer to four hundred thousand dollars of deficit funding. And if I'm right, and hopefully I'm not. But that would just mean that we're asking you to pay eleven point six percent of a tax increase on average. But there's probably another five percent of a tax increase that we're gonna take from our surplus. Again, that's assumptions and you have variations year to year. But going by what we know today, without having further clarification from our CFO, I just want you all to know that's what we're voting on. Go ahead. Are there other comments, Mr. Well, first of all, Mr. Farinbach?
I, I think I've said that I think the reasonable approach is the one point one. You and I spent some time over the last two weeks going back and forth over what those numbers should be. And I believe that that puts the municipality on a much better footing than it is on at the moment. And that, that is what is in the long-term best interests of all of the taxpayers and residents of this town. If there is an interest in reducing services, there has to be a longer budget. And as I indicated to you, and I think I indicated to other council members, I know I indicated to the mayor. That budget process needs to begin almost as soon as this budget is adopted and we are able to have a financial system that can provide us information that will assist us to then be able to control those expenditures.
Thank you. It, it's very commonplace to I, I would say threaten the public with reduced services. If we, we have to cut the budget, we have to reduce services. I, I do believe there can be greater efficiencies achieved that would not result in reduced services. I'll point to questions I've asked that, that we haven't been able to answer. Either because records don't exist, we didn't have enough detail in our records to differentiate if I've asked about certain activities, all from twenty twenty two. But I believe there's been a lot of spend in twenty twenty two that some of it at least was probably unnecessary. I can't quantify it for the public. But I did make notes, this is not, this is just reading the public questions I've asked that I don't have answers to. In twenty twenty two, I don't know what the cost of materials were for all of the borough offices that were built, refurbished, that being the mayor's office here, that being the BA's office, that being other administrative offices, that being the Viazzi Center offices. We spent dollars on materials. I don't know how much I've asked the question. I'm told that either we may not have recorded the numbers correctly, or there'd be a large burden on our employees to track that down, a burden that they don't have the time to work with, to work on. I also asked a very similar question about those offices. How much overtime did we pay those employees? Again, we may not have had the systems in place tracking that. We may have. We don't, I have not received that answer. I've asked for, actually, Ms. DeNoble has asked more than I have for the use of borough resources for festivals and for events. And that in many, many instances, we don't request reimbursement for a lot of our services. DPW has actually raised concerns to me that they are often blamed for having large overtime budgets when they're asked to support given functions, festivals and so forth, with, that they have no control over. And yet, if they exceed their overtime targets, they feel they, in, from a public standpoint, they are blamed for that. But, but along with labor and overtime costs for these festivals, there's fees for dumping garbage and recycling. There's the use of equipment that we often don't get reimbursed for, containers and so forth. We often have to tell different events to provide a porta potty of some sort. Many times, we have to pay for that. I also asked in twenty twenty two, I'm aware of at least three different, what I will refer to as ad hoc consultants that were hired. I've given our administration the names of those individuals. I've been told repeatedly, a couple of times at least, no payments were made to these individuals. I asked about ten ninety nines, I asked about W twos, I've given the names of, one of them has a consulting firm's name. I found a bills list item that actually twenty nine hundred dollars was paid to one of these people. And without getting into the details of these individuals, all I'm saying is I'm asking for funds I know were spent, and I'm being told we have no record of spending these dollars. Finally, another expense that I was against a year ago, and it bothers me even more that I, I didn't speak out more about it when it occurred. We spent ten thousand dollars on a, a new website last year, after we had just implemented a new website like the year before. I thought that was a complete waste of money. I was told the old website that we had just implemented was not up to ADA standards or not up to sub standards. And my answer to the VA at the time was, well, we pay them, they must come up to the standards. We, we even had purchased a, a module that had some sort of ADA compliant thing in it. And, and our administration, rather than holding them accountable, went out and hired a new website for ten thousand dollars. So, Mr. Farinbach, to you, to your point, while I am aware that there's always a risk of having to cut services. I think before we cut services, we have to cut fat. And I think there's too much fat.
And, and let me just say, tell you something, when I was doing a similar review in another municipality. The person speaking to me said, Greg, if you keep on staring in that rearview mirror as you're trying to drive forward, you're going to have an accident. My objective here is to simply try to identify what are the problems now? What are the problems that can be solved going forward? How do we make the organization more efficient?
Agreed.
How do we end up reducing to the extent we can, the demands that are placed on the property tax? There have been various attempts in this organization to do that. The shared municipal court that we have is one way of doing that. Other shared services that we have with other jurisdictions is another way of doing that. The appropriate allocation of costs to various parties. The item I mentioned about three weeks ago that I haven't been able to attend to because we're dealing with the budget was dealing with special events and how we control those special events and what costs they place on public works, employees, et cetera. And those are all things that we have on a list to start working on as soon as we're able to get to.
Great. I, I admire the adage of looking in a rearview mirror that your colleague shared with you. My adage that I'll share with you as well is, people who don't learn from the past are condemned to repeat it. I, I, I do wanna make a motion, but I'm gonna wait until my colleagues have had their activity.
I'm fine. I wanna thank you, Greg, and Al. I read all your emails. It was very informative. I do feel we are spending too much. I'd love to see a plan on how we are going to cut spending. I think we need better bids, not hiring consultants. I'm still waiting for a list of vehicles. I, I know you mentioned an auction, but I don't know when. And there's just a lot of more questions that need to be answered. John?
I'll make sure Al's done. Make sure you're done.
I am gonna make a motion, but I'm.
I'm happy that we're changing the now I'm anticipating surplus from one point five to one point one. I never thought one point five is very realistic, but in, you know, a budget amendment in front of us, there are a bunch of appropriation lines and very few of them go down from what the current budget compared to amendment. And a lot of them go up, and I just wanna know to what extent, are, are we just padding appropriations so it's gonna be easier to replenish that surplus? I mean, because there's so many of these lines that are just going up. And are we really expected to spend more money on all these lines or? And, and the only, there's only two that go down, like you said, and one of them is road repair. And I would think most people think that that one should probably go in the opposite direction, but.
So, so let, let me explain. What you are referring to is a draft resolution that I am requesting the governing body to give consideration. I'll go through the items. The, the legal services increase is going back to what the original appropriation number was from what had been brought down from. That includes primarily the costs of a special master that has to be paid in order for us to deal with the Fair Care Housing Corporation and the COA regulations. It also includes additional funds in there to be able to underwrite the cost of the litigation that presently exists between the mayor and the council. The additional sixteen thousand dollars that's shown under zoning is specifically related to an underestimate of the amount of money needed to be able to fund a program called the pilot that is used by the UCC people, the COE people, the accessories office and others, and it's allocated among six different offices in this state. But zoning didn't have anything in there, and that is to be able to make sure we meet the obligation that the municipality has this year. This year for that particular service. The twelve thousand dollar increase in insurance is dealing with. The the issues of not having taken into consideration. All of the costs for first aid and fire, picking up their insurance responsibilities. And also being able to cover for some of the deductibles. Police went down because I inappropriately overfunded the crossing guard cost. The municipal court. When we did a detailed analysis of what the salaries and wages were in that area. We ended up finding out that we were running thirty five thousand dollars short. Of what was needed to be able to fund all the positions in that in that court. Some of that is offset by the additional monies that we're taking in from Allenhurst and Avon, but that's shown on the revenue side of the budget. Road repair and maintenance went down. Because it's going to be offset with the clean communities grant that the municipality has received and now can anticipate. Recreation is down because we did a closer analysis of the costs of salaries and wages in that unit. And that was able to be reduced. In the utilities. Many of those were reduced when we went into the introduced budget and we ended up finding out. That several of them, given our first set of billings this year, were running low. And we wanted to make sure that we had it accurate. There is no padding in any of these appropriations.
That's all I'll say for now.
There it is. Council president, do you have any comments?
There we go. Yeah, I just want to say that I'm always deeply concerned when cities start adding double-digit municipal tax increases to the community. It makes Bradley Beach unaffordable for young families and for seniors that live here. Unfortunately, it looks like we're paying for some past spending decisions and we should. Take this as a lesson to start the financial analysis process sooner, as well as the budget process much sooner than in previous years. So. You know, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. So in this change, we did add about ninety five thousand dollars. As as Mr. Fernbach articulated. For really refinements to spending that we dug into. The surplus amount. Having had the analysis and when Anthony's back in and Chris can help us with that. Is a little bit more reassuring in that when we look at the fund balances, the fund balance for current and beach and sewer. A sewer, they have a level of stability. Having said that. Last year, we did erode about three hundred thousand of. Current fund surplus. That looks like to be about sixty four thousand this year. That's not a good trend, so we need to reverse that trend. We need to look at aggressively add spending. You have to read in there a few things. Shared services is an opportunity that we've been talking about. We have some level of that. But, you know, I don't think anything should be off the table. As we look at this and and we we already have started a conversation on what that looks like. So I I I believe I'm confident that we can reengineer some things aggressively as we look at our service models. I've been speaking to both Neptune City and Avon on and off about some shared services models for some things. That might be able to help us. So. I'm confident we can be in the right place. If we look at our municipal spend over the last three years. In twenty twenty one, it was a COVID year and and we basically did not increase the municipal budget a dime. In twenty twenty two, our municipal budget went up. I want to say it was about three hundred thousand dollars. And. This is a significant increase, but we have been able to hold the line for a few years. This has popped up on us. Now we have to just get it stabilized. So that's what we we will be working on as a as a team. That'll conclude my comments. And at this point, I would say that. I want to make a motion to. Accept this amendment and. I guess I'm looking for a second on that.
Second.
Mr. Marco?
Should finish the first.
Yes. Can I show you the notice? Mr. Noble?
No.
Chiguputosey?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for the feedback.
And I'd like to make a motion budget related. That's okay, budget related or? Budget discussion related.
Mayor, we discussed that in.
Yeah, yeah, the mayor was president when he did. Never ceases to amaze. That you ignore conversations we have.
I didn't ignore any conversations.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Fernbach, for reminding the mayor, really, the exception to your comment.
Okay, let's make your motion, please.
I am making a little bit of a lengthy motion because I would like to make sure that it's captured in the minutes and Erica for you as well. But it's. I think everyone on this council, everyone in this audience, hopefully will find it productive. Specifically, I motion that the council directs the mayor and the business administrator to develop a spending plan. To be shared with the council in the next thirty days. This spending plan will. One, aggressively reduce spend for the remainder of twenty twenty three and for twenty twenty four, including restrictions to the extent possible on. New hires, overtime, discretionary dollars spent under other expense budget categories. Procurement practices to ensure competitive pricing of materials and supplies. Potential savings opportunities or revenue growth opportunities tied to shared services. Vehicle and equipment management, increased use of purchasing collaboratives and discount discounted services. Negotiated discuss related to professional services firms as appropriate. Revenue enhancement opportunities related to borough services, e.g. code, construction, police, et cetera, and perhaps other. Secondly, along with aggressive reducing spend. Define and develop a policy for managing the use of borough properties by applicants to require. A appropriate resources are identified and provided to the applicant, for example. Porta potties, rubbish and recycling containers, tables, chairs, et cetera. B reimburse from all applicants for bur- to get reimbursement from all applicants for borough costs. Related to labor, materials, equipment, setup, cleanup, waste and recycling disposal, et cetera. Indemnification for borough for the borough against injury accidents, et cetera, and reimbursement for property damage. Again, leaving another open to further interpretation. So that is my motion. I am looking for a second.
Can I ask you a question personally, please? A while ago, I think several code enforcement officers ago, we were informed that all the fees that were charging for pretty much everything are just really low. And out of step with other towns. Would that be captured by this? This, well, this is really a spend management plan. But I mean, that's really more of an increase revenue, but do you think any of this this captures that concept of?
Member me looking at these. Councilman, excuse me. In my comments, I'd be indicating identifying additional other revenue sources. And doing a review of the municipality's fee structure would be part of that process.
Thank you. So. We've tried to, in this motion, I've tried to give us a condensed timeframe of thirty days. Mr. Farma, if you think that's inadequate. We can certainly be flexible, but but there is a sense of urgency.
What I would say is you have to wait fourteen days for the hearing. Then there's another whatever seven to ten days before we even are able to get a. A rate struck and get through the bill preparation process. And it takes at least. After the fourteen days. Five to seven days to be able to get admins to get the budget up and running when we can then finally get a report. So what I would find to be more reasonable, would it be if it were sixty days or at a minimum forty five days?
I will amend the motion that I just handed out to everyone where I asked it to be shared with the council in the next sixty days. I'm sorry, within the next thirty days to to forty five days.
Second.
Mr. Marco? Yes. Thank you. Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gupatosey?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
I'm going to abstain and I'll give you the reason why. I appreciate this document. I wish I would have seen it a little bit earlier. I have a lot of questions. Sorry, we have order, please. A number of these things I have to ask questions around policies, procedures and timing. Can we do these things in that context? I actually have a list myself with some things that we've already started discussing. That we could incorporate into this. I just don't want to. Agree to something that either we have issues with or we're not being inclusive. So the motion's going to pass anyway, so that's my reason for abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move to the next agenda item, which is workshop on revisions to chapter three ten. I'm not sure if we want to leave that workshop, but. Councilman Weber, is it you or?
Here, Al.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who who were present at our last meeting. We began, we at least got the possible introduction of. Changes amendments to our noise ordinances. And the last meeting, we were very specifically focused. We even had a draft language very specifically focused on. Changing construction to. Limit construction noise in the summers on Saturdays as well as Sunday. Sunday's already exists. We were going to expand that limitation to include Saturdays. And what we heard from the public was. There were a lot of other questions that they hadn't, they wanted us, the council, to address. There were a lot of unique situations that they were raising. Is construction for commercial only? What if my neighbor's out in the backyard with a jackhammer, creating a new patio or something? Is is that construction? And Councilman Weber and I both had also identified areas that we were not focused on last meeting, but we had identified areas in the current ordinance. That just seemed a little antiquated. Referencing the use of steam engines and some other things that probably were not as relevant today as they might have been when the ordinance was first drafted. So what Councilman Weber and I have done is pulled from other ordinances. I can assure you, none of this did we create on our own. But we but we did look at other beach communities because we wanted to make sure that we're trying to get an apples and apples. Understanding what others are doing to. To manage noise, especially in the summer months. And what most of you, any of you who looked at this redrafted series of amendments. You would have noticed a lot of a lot of changes, but many of them are very inconsequential. You know, wordsmithing, creating little better titles, little better descriptions. Some paragraphs were struck completely because they were stated or we consolidated them. And then we added a couple of new paragraphs or or subsections, if you will. Subsections that we didn't have, but we saw in other communities that we thought were relevant to Bradley Beach. So what was shared with the public over the weekend and the last couple of days. Covers ninety percent of the. Of the changes we envisioned. However. Over those past few days, Councilman Weber and I had put our heads together as we were revisiting this. And we shared with the rest of the council a handful of additional edits that we'd like to have us collectively consider. As we move forward with our new noise orders. So. John, I don't know, would you, I mean, that's an overview, but would you like to take us through the ordinance itself and maybe reference some of the edits?
I think actually what's the most fair thing to do is to, what are the changes that we're looking at that don't, that the public doesn't have? And since that was sent by email, I don't actually have it in front of us. For example, like the definition on holiday, like ones that you might, I have a. Okay, so this is just. A change to what what we're suggesting is a change to what people. Saw already that got published. In the definition, the word holidays. It's being suggested that we don't list all the specific holidays. We just, maybe we should just go back to or just instead say federally recognized holidays. If that's language, that's okay with the the town attorney. There's a section that limits the noises on things like radios. And what we had suggested was limiting its its radios, its televisions, its things that, you know. Yeah, phonographs, I guess. We have ten at night to eight in the morning, and we're actually suggesting we make that. Eight at night. Instead of ten at night. So that's a change from what people have. Which a lot of these, there's a section for other noises and that's. Includes powered model vehicles. If you're like running their little radio operated cars or something like that. Again. Initially, what got sent out to the public was prohibiting that noise from ten o'clock at night to eight o'clock in the morning, and we're saying that should be more like. Make it eight o'clock at night, eight o'clock in the morning, instead of ten o'clock at night. There's one for loading operations. And the loading operations one. Talks about. Any vehicle opening and destruction fails, boxes, crates, containers, garbage cans. Because it says garbage cans, we wanted to add to what was sent out to the public to say to accept. To say this doesn't include solid waste and recycling removal done by the borough. So meaning like, let's not limit. Our own guys going down the street, picking up trash and recycling. There's another section here, eight, and we wanted to, oh, okay, so there's a section H, construction noise. It says commercial. Or residential and it says, you know, this is what I was talking about banning it on. Saturday's at ten AM to. To six PM. We're considering, we'd like to strike the word residential for this. So just make sure that it only pertains to. Commercial construction.
On that, I think it's a question for us. We're not recommending, I'm not recommending that personally.
Okay, so that's one that we want to.
We want to discuss that.
Discuss and hear from the hear from the public on that one. Next one is. Oh, in that same section. Where again, construction noise, we're limiting commercial. And discussing residential. There's an exception for if this is. It's an emergency. And in that, in the language that we have, it says like, if there's. An emergency and a permit has been obtained from the building official. I just wanted a frank discussion. I don't know. I'm prepared to answer this, but. You know, how if somebody has to do some kind of emergency construction, how can they get a permit on the on a weekend or something like that? Should we should we even include that language or should we just get rid of it because?
We we call in code.
You call and and they write, they can write a permit on it.
I don't think they write a permit, but they can approve some things. It's a situation like if a tree comes down or. There's a fire.
Yeah, well, right. And there's a separate section on trees. So I appreciate that. That's good. We're just trying to figure out what's the best language to to put in there to capture. And if the borough attorney, Greg, if. Can you like, you know, when we get to, like, can you guide us on what's the good language there? Like, what makes sense in that?
I, I, I see your second assignment.
Okay, okay, sure, um. The other ones. Oh, we suggested that we add um, the word hardscaping when we're talking about like. Power tools and landscaping, and I think that's fine. I think you just have to come up with a definition for hardscaping and add it to it. And then on this section that we have about um. Power tools. Oh, boy, I find that um. What we want to do is to, to delete language that says from October first until Friday before Memorial Day and saying um. Cause that's an exception. I'm not actually finding that.
Yeah, Johnny, I, I have that. Okay, so we're talking about uh. Q, power tools. You have it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. For item, sub paragraph Q, power tools. We had wording um, saying that basically you could use your power tools as a resident. We're not talking about commercial construction, but whether, for example, we talked about uh. Powered saw, sander, drill, grinder, garden and landscaping equipment, tools of like nature. Be used primarily for domestic purposes. Outdoors and residential areas shall be prohibited, except during the following hours and. We said uh, Monday through Friday, you basically can use your tools eight AM to six PM. Originally, we said Saturday, you can use your tools ten AM to six PM. That part's good. We, we think, we'll ask for your opinion, but. Uh, we added Sunday, so we said Saturday and Sunday, you can use your tools six to ten, uh, sit, I'm sorry, ten AM to six PM. And there was wording that said from October one through uh, the, uh, until the Friday of Memorial Day. But that was really language we had intended to use for uh, prohibiting uh, any noise at all during the summer. However, for residential use of power tools, we feel you should be able to use it Monday through Sunday, basically seven days a week. Residential, but weekends would start at ten o'clock AM. So that's. That was that particular adjustment. Then uh, John, do you want to go back to S, I think?
Uh, yeah, so same question on commercial tree service noise, um. We. Wanted to make sure that, you know, it's emergencies would be allowed, so as long as we have the right language on that. We, we're changing the time on that. So, yeah, wanna ban. Commercial tree service noise. You know, Monday, Fri- Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM. That's like all other construction noise. And then Saturday, ten AM to six PM. And again, this is commercial tree service noise, and we should have to make sure we have some kind of exception for an emergency in there. Um, and then finally, the last two, question mark, should we add a section for fireworks? My. Knee jerk reaction is that, well, fireworks are illegal. I don't know that we have to say like, noise from fireworks is then illegal, but let's. Talk about that. And then um. For enforcement, should we specifically say that enforcement should include code enforcement during working hours and then the police after hours? So those are sort of the, the question marks on what got handed out to people. Is that?
Excuse me, could you uh, re-explain Saturday restrictions?
Sure, so what we're um, what we're proposing. It kind of depends on most of, like, construction noise, for example. Um, we are gonna, that's gonna be banned um. Well, kind of fun, construction noise again, can we go? Um, eight AM to six PM. Uh, it's already banned on. The exceptions are eight AM to six PM. And then um, on Saturday, the exception would be ten AM to six PM, essentially in the summer.
We wouldn't, yeah, we would not allow it.
Exactly. Go ahead. So let's talk, if you're to say when you're allowed to perform. Cause actually this, and just so the ordinance does both, sometimes it talks about the exceptions, it kind of talks about the rules, sorry about that. So let's talk about when you're allowed to do construction. That's the easier way to say it. Eight AM to six PM on a weekday all year round. On Saturday from ten AM to six PM. From October first until the Friday of Memorial Day weekend.
And during the summer months?
During the summer months, there's no, there's never any construction on a holiday or Sunday. And during the summer months, you're only allowed to do it during the week. It's commercial or resident, as we run into right now, commercial or residential construction activity can take place on weekdays throughout the entire year. And on Saturdays from ten AM to six PM, from October first until Friday of Memorial Day weekend. During the summertime, there would be no construction on weekends or holidays. That's the basic change. Already not allowed generally otherwise on Friday. I hope that, is that clear?
Yeah.
I'll tell you, you can do your construction, uh, whether you're commercial, residential, wherever you are. On weekdays from eight AM to six PM throughout the entire year. And on Saturdays from ten AM to six PM, from October first until the Friday of Memorial Day weekend. Which would thereby mean that you could only use construction on weekdays and non-holidays. From the Friday Memorial Day weekend to September day.
The challenge, let, let me address that. It's a great question, and the challenge is. We, we've talked to residents. We've got residents who say, my next door neighbor is a contractor, but he's fixing his own house. And he'll say it's residential as he's tearing apart his garage, but he's, but he's a professional contractor. Uh, how, and, and I don't want this noise all summer long on the weekends. And apparently, one instance, I talked to a gentleman, uh, this neighbor's been doing this work for a year. So the question does get down to, what do we as a community want? Do we want to say, we don't want saws and banging? And the noises that you associate with construction, as opposed to blowing leaves, uh, mowing your lawn. Pow- power tools in general, but construction noise. Do we want to limit only professional or commercial, or do we want to limit all?
Well, we're not shouting out, we're not.
I, Greg, I just have a question. I don't see a definition of construction on here. I think that might help clear up, because construction is building something, it's tearing down something. Like, we need to really have a clear idea of what we're constructing.
Right here, operating or causing to be operated, any equipment used in construction to erect, including excavation, repair, alter, demolish. Any building, structure, streets, alleys or furnaces thereto in residential or commercial land use category. It says, "Shall be prohibited except," sorry, what I just wrote there.
Okay, well, I don't see.
Yes, right, thank you. So it's valuable.
So, so ju- just, hold on for just, once we get the council complete, I mean, the comments, we will open it up for, for public comments.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. I'm also, I wanted to talk about the radios you talked about. Um, I think eight PM on a Saturday, it's a little early to. Try and enforce quiet, as much as I love it, cause I basically go to bed at eight thirty. But um, unfortunately, you know, people like to stay up a little later and I think it's gonna be tough for the police to enforce eight PM quiet time. On a weekend, on a Saturday. So right now it's ten PM, ten.
This isn't the process right, hold on. Cause I do have a question.
I think that price right though.
I wanted to direct the question to Lieutenant Browning. Have you reviewed this? Um, where's the, as. So the enforcement arm of this is gonna be primarily the police. Is there anything that you all have reviewed or have you reviewed this to say? That's a problem, or we can do this, or, you know, ha- have you had an assessment of this?
Uh, Chief and I talked briefly this morning, a little bit about it, but, I mean, you know, we enforce it. He's not big on having us locked into a specific time. It's always been for us, if somebody complains that the music's too loud, we come and address it. Try to give them a warning, say, listen, this, this is too loud, whether it's a band, a live band, a TV, a radio, a car. Whatever it is, and we say, you've got some complaints, you can please turn it down, if it's a birthday party, whatever. And then if we have to come back and it's still at that volume, that's where we start addressing, you know, listen, now we're back again. We can hear it a block away. We'll sit a block away and listen, so it's not on the burden, it's not on the caller or the resident. You know, we'll sit a block away, we'll issue me a live camera, so that if it comes in court down the road, we can, you know, prove that there was excessive loud noise. You know, and, and after a warning, maybe two, depending on the attitudes and the cooperation, you might write a ticket. You know, if you're to say, you know, if you can't have any noise after eight o'clock, if there's a live band at, you know, six o'clock. Just, there's really nothing we can do then. You know, that, that's, that's.
That's gonna be my next question. Once we lock into the timeframes, does that then? Put us to the disadvantage?
It does make it a little more difficult for us to enforce, because their answer is, I can do anything I want up until eight o'clock, ten o'clock, whatever.
Right, although the lieutenant detective, um, the current ordinance basically has the same timeframes. I mean, we may be talking about tweaking it an hour up or down, but. Mostly the current ordinance is, which I know you've been.
Yeah, when I started, it was, you know, twenty plus years ago, there's, there weren't no timeframes. That was a lot easier to enforce back then. So the more you adjust the times, the little difficulty gets with us. We're, we're not big on time, which is.
One thing we did, we did try to do, uh, you know, for the council's benefit as well as for the public's. We did try to rely less upon measuring decibels. The original ordinance was pretty big on, you know, measure these decibels, and we incorporated language from other uh, another municipality. That more or less said, uh, it would be a disturbance, the noise would be a disturbance level to a reasonable person. Or to, to allow you that kind of judgment as, as the enforcement official. Uh, reasonable was used, or if you could hear it audibly, uh, within fifty feet of the property line. So we tried to give more. You know, easy to enforce measures in general. But I think the timeframes, others have timeframes, you know, we had timeframes. But I'm not sure we wanna, I think we still probably want to give those this guidelines, at least.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just, the more you wanna move it forward or back, you know, it was. You ask me from an enforcement standpoint, it really doesn't do too much for us. You know, the time restriction. Like you said, without the decimal meters and the way it is now. We sit outside, and if we can hear from the street or block away. We don't need your, you as a resident complaining, that's, listen, it's too loud. Sometimes we'll just fly by on routine patrol. You know, on a, on a midnight shift, and when it's quiet and, and clear, you can hear that noise from, from everywhere. Um, you know, if it's in an apartment complex and it's a neighbor, we'll stand out in the hallway. You know, again, we're not outside, we're in a, so like, everything is a case by case basis and. You know, we try to take the burden off of you is, you know, we don't come and say, hey, your neighbor complained or someone complained, or this noble complaint or. We just, you know, resident complained and we're here, we sat aside, we heard it was loud. And everything really comes in cooperation with us. Most of the time they're complying, you know, even the summer visitors and, and people that we have, the younger generation. You know, we give them a, we give them a warning, we identify them, take them very, very clear. You know, and we also explain that if you get a ticket, we, we, we check records, we keep everything is, is uh, maintained. Before we even go, we check and see if they've gotten warnings before, if they've got tickets. Because if you get a summons and then we come back for another summons, the fines increase every single time you get a summons. So we explain that to them as well. You know, and uh. We have, we have pretty good success with, with just navigating in that.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask one question of the uh, attorney. Greg, with the changes that we're contemplating, I think you have them. If we introduce, but made some of those changes, are those changes that can be made without a reintroduction or? Are they? I mean, they, they regard specific parameters and days, so I, I, I think those are substantive changes to me.
You think they are substantive?
I believe they're substantive.
That's kind of where we'll stay, yeah.
I have a comment and a clarifying question. Um, first, I just want to echo uh, Councilwoman DeNoble's uh, sentiments. I think that eight o'clock is too early as well. It's, it's June fifteenth and it's daylight out still at eight o'clock. Um, and then my other, just to clarify, um, I had concerns about the emergencies language. So did I understand correctly that Mister Cannon, you're gonna go in and just make sure that what says, you know, section H subsection four and then three or one dash four kind of makes sense?
Yes, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
I, I have a question on the, the memo that Councilwoman DeNoble sent out last night, um. Further suggestion related to communications, what advise all residents, homeowners, landlords and renters, consider using reverse nine one one. Mayor's newsletter posted on website. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was a comment, advise all residents bracket homeowners, landlords, renters, consider using reverse nine one one. Mayor's news, newsletter posted on Borough website. Send insert and tax letter posted Borough Hall. I wasn't sure what. That was tied to.
Now, Mister Mary, yeah, let me explain. Uh, obviously, the public's not privy to this, but. I did send uh, an email, Councilman Weber and I did uh. Just advising the council that we were adding some additional potential edits. And this part that the mayor's now reading is feedback we've actually received from residents saying. It, whatever you guys do, can you please communicate it? I think people are really worried about construction that's going on today. And.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, got, got, got.
So it's how many different ways can we communicate?
Got, got. So this is more of the change management, any change we do make. Got it, thank you.
Yeah, and it's a good point. I mean, we could tell contractors when they're getting a permit, or we could tell. You know, just make sure they understand, I don't know to the extent that's done right now, but just to make it clear that this is the rules.
I think it is done now, but, yeah. Okay, um, so I want to um. But before I'm done, I want to open it up for ten minutes for public if they have comments. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. No, oh, well, you're next.
So I had submitted some comments and some of them were uh, particularly related to senior, so thank you, I appreciate it. So in terms of say, professional landscapers, are professional landscapers allowed to work on Saturdays, you're in season? In the summer season, according to this?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
That they are?
Yes, we're only using, preventing. Construction and uh, tree, for commercial tree removal services. On the Saturdays during the summer.
Okay, so um, then additionally, I had actually, you know, submitted the request. To contact all of the various contractors. I think that's very important, um, so they're aware of it, um, not just when they come in for permits. But if the borough has all of these contacts inactive, um. Um, the active files of each of the residences that are, that are in construction or whatever, um. That they be noted, that we proactively do that. Because very often there are construction professionals to come and they have absolutely no idea. That this change has been made and this lack of construction work that is going on on Saturdays. And especially when we're, if we're going to be implementing this um, in the season while we're making these changes, I think it's very important. Again, it takes some of the burden off of the residents to have to um, get into something with their neighbor, which is very uncomfortable. Um, or to, or to contact the police. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, I think not having maximum decimal level and not having some kind of curtain time. Makes it too arbitrary. We witnessed some incidents just on our block. A neighbor complained and the police came to our neighbor's house. At one thirty in the afternoon, because she felt that the kids that were swimming in the pool were being too noisy. Or people talking on a porch and actually putting the. It's just too arbitrary and it's inevitably finds it causing problems with the neighbors. I'm talking lightly, I say myself, but being on the porch. You know, nine thirty on a Saturday night or Friday night in the summer, I mean. Is perfectly fine, as long as it's not, doesn't exceed. But I think we need decimals and curvy. So that it's not arbitrary.
I'm sorry, the second thing you said, decimal and.
And curvy time.
Curvy time, I'm sorry, yeah.
So that it's not just our trade, it's somebody can't complain that it's very noisy, one thirty in the afternoon, it's annoying. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Dr. Tom, where are you? I just want to clarify about residential, um, power tool we can do on Sundays. Does anyone have proposed or not on Sunday?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, yeah, correct.
But the weekends start at ten a.
Ten, so as long, okay. Uh, the next thing is I'm definitely bigger for ten o'clock as far as a time. I have young kids, my kids are in my pool and they are having a great time. They are not out in the streets or in my yard, having a great time and listening to music. Uh, my other question is, um, as far as, um, events, so we have an event at the gazebo event, does that fall under this new guidelines? If they have an event, as of now, I can call the police and say, this is really disturbing. Is that, I, can I do that right now?
Yeah, that happens now, you can evolve, sorry.
We do on occasions if there's, if there's an event, um, you know, or at an establishment and we.
No, I mean, like I don't, though, so public events like that.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll go speak to DJ and ask him, you know, the coordinator, whether it was in just had him, hey, we've got some places to turn it down.
I was wondering if you could put that in the ordinance about special events and not moving and saying, here, these are the special events that can be part of, because I know in the town I give up, you would have to get, you're having a party, you would almost get a party permit. So that would be like, you have music, um, because, um, unfortunately friends of ours, um, they just got the police on at their wedding. Their wedding, they got called at the James, it was at six thirty P M. And they had the police show up and they had to turn their music on before their wedding. And if that was my wedding, I would lose my mind. But I spent all that money, all that time, all that planning and all it took is a neighbor at six thirty on a Saturday to go, your mountain music is too loud. And then the cops had to show up, then they called again at eight and then they they shut them down. For anybody. So if there's any way that you can put some language in there to protect special events at the church, at the synagogue, at something, because there's gonna be events there and you're gonna tell them, you can't do that, like, they're having a celebration for something and we're just gonna shut them down because someone just went on here.
Okay, just, do you mind if I respond? We have some language that might address your concerns. The current section I, it's subtitled, uh, section I, schools, churches, courts, to create any, any excessive or disturbing noise on any street adjacent to any school, institute of learning, church or court, provided at conspicuous sight that displayed in such streets indicating the proximity of such institutions. So.
I will be that, yes.
So I guess what we're, what we're not, we're protecting the churches, but you're saying you don't want anybody shutting down the churches.
Yeah, okay, like I think they had Alfa and Assis during COVID. I mean, I heard them, they were up the street, I didn't hear things, you know, but also you know, these people weren't religious, so they didn't have their wedding. I don't think they should discriminate against, because they just chose not to have that in church and they had a James and they got their wedding, also room and they're great people, they had a great time, but it's just like, that was mine. I would be very.
Well, now the, the other subsection that again, I think is, I think is on point. Subsection N is in Nancy.
Yeah.
Public entertainment loudspeakers. So that could include someone having a church, uh, reception, having a speaker, a photograph or something. To operate or permit to be operated, any mechanical device, loudspeaker, other sources of sound in any place of public entertainment, that would be festivals and things like that, I guess.
That would be private.
In any place of public entertainment.
Right, the James Hotel, that's private, it's private.
Okay, so maybe it's on.
Yeah.
But this, this allows sound from, uh, from eight A M. to ten P M.
Yeah.
So if that.
But that's the current one right now?
That, no, that's, that's the one we're proposing.
Okay.
It goes up to ten P M.
Okay. I was just wondering if we can change that to include private, because Darcy's having a band, which they do quite often. You know, it all takes one person who moved in across the street and Darcy's had no more music ever.
You know, it's funny, when I read this, I was not, I was not making that distinction. I was thinking if Darcy's has band playing or soccer match, you know, people yelling. I was thinking of that as public entertainment, but your statement's not.
Yeah, so probably would be you having an event here at gazebo, that or the, what's called, in the town, that's public property.
So I agree with language to protect town events at the beach or Riley Park, um, but this is where I think that putting the times in actually is, it's like, no, you know, ten o'clock, like you're good, like some first piece of plane, but they have, they can't complain until ten o'clock, at ten o'clock, they gotta turn it down.
And as of right now, that time is not in there or?
No.
Not at all? There's no time right now?
For.
Time enforcement, for private events. For any event. So if I have my backyard right now and I have a party right now at eight o'clock and someone's shutting you down, they get a complaint.
Yeah.
I don't rate it.
It's some, it's not always black and white either with, when we're dealing with the compliant on that. We will, um, I mean, whether it's a baby's first, you know, birthday party, a sweet sixteen, a graduation, a craft party, a fifty year anniversary party, we respond all.
Let's not say frat party, please.
And, um, so we deal, we deal with them again on a case by case basis. And if we having a decimal reader wouldn't be fantastic, but those are, uh, machines that have to be calibrated and maintained. I mean, yeah, I can probably get an app on my phone, but that's not gonna be, they're not, they're not, you can't do that for pride. Um, I mean, years ago, I think we actually had some, we don't have that now.
But that time is my concern, is there a time with that?
There, there, there is a time
Presently.
in the, in the ordinance now. It's like, you know, the prohibition is ten at night to eight in the morning.
It will still respond even if it's outside of that timeframe. And if it is excessive, we still try to deal with it. And if it becomes to a point where it might not be excessive for what we're saying, but it's still a nuisance to you, the resident, we explain, there's an option that you can go to the court and sign a complaint yourself. We document, lose air, we identify everybody, so there's no question. And then down the road, you can go and lodge a complaint. And then the court has, uh, a mediation thing, a bid into Babelton. You don't have to go straight to see the judge for the ticket. You can go to like, hey, listen, you know, my next door neighbor has kids in the pool every single day, all day long. It's driving me crazy. I work mid nights, I got sleep.
Yeah.
Don't mediate that, you know.
That's understandable, yes. My concern is that the time thing and the decimal thing, I think we should have a decimal thing. Because if someone's complaining and they're like, it's not that loud, but they're still complaining about it, subject is a wedding, you know, it's ten o'clock, it's nine o'clock and they're saying it's excessive and I say it's not excessive. You know, so that's my.
Okay, very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. No, I'm sorry.
Me?
Yes.
All in general, what are three, what are happening? I thought when you're hearing the noise things on the weekends, you would put your try to restrict commercial uh, moors and uh, weed whackers and things on Saturdays and Sundays to some extent. You know, beautiful day, you're sitting on your porch at five o'clock at night and somebody's retracting. One of the loudest things ever made. Is it with any restrictions with that?
I, I, my comment there is we've separated out construction noise and then for that type of noise, we put it in with power tools. And, um, I feel like we should actually make a distinction that why should landscaping equipment be different than construction equipment? Because I agree with you, it's super loud and annoying, so.
Extremely loud and I know, I, I, I think I'm not, I, I think it's, uh, I can't think of it now, yeah.
Well, some towns have a band like, you know, like whatever, leaf blow, weed whackers, that stuff, um, but I feel like to separate that stuff out. And then if we want to talk about power tools, like that would be operated by you know, residents, we can make that different, but commercial landscaper, we, I don't know that we should treat it any different than commercial construction, quite highly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes. Yeah. You really want against the law?
Robin D. Police, one eleven Power Play Center. Um, pretty much on the same wavelength this lady just mentioned. This coming Sunday, Father's Day, you can invite fifteen people to your house at eleven o'clock in the morning. I have a pool, you know, a pool party. There's nothing to stop your neighbor to start power tools or landscaping from noon until six o'clock.
What's the address, Mr. Steve?
One eleven.
So I can come to the pool party.
Yeah. Always welcome, yeah. So it's happened to me in the past, more than days was a father, was a father's day. So you have your neighbor or somebody, or even the one neighbor says, oh, I want me to do on a Saturday, I'm gonna do my lawn from eleven to twelve thirty. Okay, it's only an hour and a half. The next guy, two doors down, is doing his from one to three. And the guy behind you in the next street, on a totally different street, on Ocean Park, he's doing his from three to five. So you have the whole day, we work all year round so that we can enjoy ten, eleven Saturdays and Sundays in the summer with some peace and quiet. And, and on my street, we haven't had it. Since two thousand and seventeen, I've had construction every Saturday for five years in the summer. And now you're stopping that, but I'm gonna tell you right now, a lawnmower, I mean, a weed whacker like this lady just mentioned, or these guys have these things on their backs, even the homeowners have them, they're louder than the construction guys. So if you say, if you say construction is no good, then the landscapers are louder than the construction guys. So how can we say the landscapers can do it, or even the homeowners? And if, if you're a homeowner, if you have people at your house, say from eleven to six, okay, they have to do something. Maybe we could do it, we will do it for a few hours. Maybe they could do it on Saturdays and Sundays from, I don't know, one to four, two to five. And then it's not at breakfast, lunch and dinner, but you know, the people are coming down on the weekends. He gave them three or four hours, maybe in the afternoon to do it and they, you wouldn't, you know, I said on my porch every Saturday morning, Sunday morning, I don't want to hear it on Saturday or Sunday morning. I don't want to hear weed whackers. I, I honestly just don't. And I know a lot of people who don't too. You need me to get signatures or you need me to do anything like that? I'd be willing to have to provide them. But I just think we're trying to enjoy the summer as best we can and to give the, the people who do that work themselves a couple of hours. And I don't know how, why it takes people two or three hours to do it when the guys that we pay come in and out of your property in fifteen minutes. You can pay somebody twenty dollars in fifteen minutes on a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, your whole property will be weed whacked and the lawn will be gone. So I don't know, public works needs extra money, many money in town. Let's, I know, the insurance, but that's my thought. And I've been trying to explain that to people and we're just trying to enjoy, enjoy the summer.
Yep, thank you. And I just want to say the flip side of that argument is some people have their properties, they only come down on the weekends, they want to be able to maintain, like we want people to mow their lawn, we want people like, want to look good.
Do we do it from one to four for pretty much, it's not during breakfast, it's not giving a lawn.
We put a timeframe on it, I, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at, but I'm just saying there's that.
Either a timeframe or not at all, it's my, my. I can get, I can get my, I can get the guy who does my lawn, he comes to anybody's house for like fifteen or twenty dollars and be, be on it.
Thank you. Thank you, yes.
Susan, five hundred six Monmouth Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council and Resident. Myself and my husband have lived at five hundred six Monmouth Avenue for the past sixteen years. In regards to ordinance twenty twenty three dash nine chapter three ten noise, we are supportive of homeowners working to improve their homes in our beautiful reserve community, but after enduring sixteen months of continuous weekends only rehab and construction and going into second summer season of more construction, we urge the mayor and town council to pass this ordinance. Anyone who's walked past our job site on Monmouth Avenue with our next door to us can empathize with our situation. I work full time from home during the week, so weekends are very important to us. We consider ourselves to be good neighbors and understand the noise of weekday construction, but would like to have peace during the summer weekends to enjoy our family and our backyard and have been unable to do so for the past two summers. So we ask that you please say yes to amend this ordinance twenty twenty three dash nine, chapter three ten. And we do have a pool in our backyard, so we invite you all to come visit us. Thank you.
Right down the street, all right. Shouldn't I ask, shouldn't I say that? Okay, yes.
In Seattle, Ocean Park condominiums. This is one of those things that image everybody had. Personally, I don't want anyone's noise. I don't want pool parties, I don't want neighbors in the backyard, I don't want, I want none of it. And I remember a thing on T V that said, um, I just heard from my doctor that I tested negative patients. That's where I am, that's where I am with all of you. Being that said, Mr. Marco made a comment regarding daylight. In approximately seven to ten days, daylight will be shrinking. So I find that comment, they'll need to eliminate. I've said for years, contractors need to register in order to do business with the borough. I will repeat that, that I learned tonight, when I say things and I, sometimes it gets hurt. I'm not clear because I didn't hear. And please let. Um, could somebody please clarify, when you say construction, was that including interior as well as exterior? So if somebody wants to cut with a, you know, wet saw on the tiles for their bathroom inside their garage or even inside their house, is that included? So are we talking this exterior construction or interior?
So the, it said, it says construction noise. It says operating or causing to be operated, any equipment used in construction.
Where are you constructing?
It's alright, it does, so my, it doesn't say, so, um, I mean, as we heard before, I would imagine there's.
I think something like that should be clarified. It all. You're not, but you know, you can have, I mean, the noise coming. In addition, I believe you said landscapers were excluded. Now, landscapers don't only have the horrible sounds of weed whackers, they also multitask through payers and things like that. So clarify again, I'm not telling you, again, I did tell you what my opinion was, silence twenty four seven. Um, but like everything else in Bradley Beach, could we try to get it right the first time? You know, we do an ordinance, we pass it and then oopsie. It would just, however you go, and I really do think, um, is with having contracted register, if they want to do business with Bradley.
Thank you. Um, we'll, we'll take two more comments. We're kind of over. If the other people have comments, we can just email them to Erica and we'll, we'll address those with people, so, uh, yeah. Are you the spouse of the person just talked? I am.
I should pick somebody else. Not that your comments weren't good, I just wanted to spread it out.
Oh, when you hear me, you might, in my degree. Uh, my name is Steve, I live at five hundred six Monmouth Avenue. Um, and anybody that's on Nextdoor may have seen a post I made a few weeks ago, um, seven thousand of you saw it, so, um, it, it was a very popular post and it had a lot to do with the construction site of my next door neighbor that's now, uh, stretched out to sixteen months. Um, there, there's a couple of things I want to say about that. Uh, but first, this was a taste, this has been an ongoing, an ongoing, um, thing with us. Yeah, we get that in play, but.
I got what it needed.
Uh, but anyway, the first thing I wanted to say was thank you for getting Evergreen Beach open, uh, prior to uh, the July first date that was given, given to us. That, that means a lot to us. I was disappointed that the beach wasn't open. Um, now getting, getting back to the noise ordinance, um, after I put the post up on Nextdoor, um, only one person in the township reached out to me. Um, and now, since then, I've sent a couple of emails to people in the town council, the business administrator, the clerk, uh, and I just feel like I'm kind of getting stonewalled, um. I, I haven't received any answers to any of my questions. I was given a twenty four day lead times for Oprah requests for the documents that I need to make, uh, informed decisions going forward. And at this point, I, I feel like the township is not, the borough is not protecting us at all. Now, it's fairly new that we pulled you into this because we dealt with this on our own for about a year. But, um, we're past that point now. Um, and I'm disappointed that I've sent emails and pictures and not only have things not improved at the, the job site, but no one even answered any of my questions, uh, regarding what's going on over there. So, um, going forward, I would like to see, and I think one of the reasons is, is that you're too, you guys are too hung up on this budget. That's why when the budget jags off into June, you guys let things like looking after the taxpayers slide a little bit because you're so worried about the budget. If the budget was done ahead of time, maybe you guys would have more time to answer citizens' concerns over what's going on at the job site next door. Um, so those of you that are sitting here that got emails from me that didn't answer me, um, I hope you will answer me soon. Uh, because I'm really, really running out of patience, um, as is my wife. Um, it's been sixteen months Of unadulterated, uh, Saturday and Sunday construction. Um, thank you.
Thank, thank you, and. I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, you know. We, we have been talking about this.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we have one more, this would be the last one, there's people for email.
Well, I, I had my hand up. Thank you. Uh, Tom's Jake nine six twelve Third Avenue. I, I am not a big fan of, uh, the code office doing the oversight of these ordinances. You really should be the police department. I've interacted in many towns along the shore, a lot of shore parties. It's a hard ten o'clock. You're done. Please show up ten o'clock. You wrap up the noise. You can sit and have a cocktail and wrap up your night. But, uh, it's a hard ten o'clock, and, and I think they do a great job in Asbury Park, the summer stage, boom, hard ten o'clock. They're breaking it down at nine forty-five. So, um, I, I think it should be ten o'clock, and the police should be the ones to, uh. To take care of, uh, that's, and, and I do want to thank the council for doing this. This ordinance is a long, long time in coming. Uh, we are a quality community, we should have quality of life. And this will help us avoid conflict between neighbors, and I think it is the one or four ordinance. So, um, thank you for taking it on.
Thank you. Okay, again, any, any other, um, comments, you can just email.
Actually, please email, uh, council, uh, comments and questions, send your email there.
Thank you. Okay, um. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation, I'll, I'll read. Excuse me, I'll read the proclamation, Borough Bradley Beach, Juneteenth Proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the end of enslavement in America. And whereas Juneteenth is a day of reflection, a day of renewal, a pride-filled day. It is a moment in time taken to appreciate the progress and contributions made by African, African Americans. This, this society. And whereas Juneteenth is inclusive of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities recognized by Americans everywhere. As a symbolic milestone in our journey towards a more perfect union. And whereas it is a day where we take one step closer together. To better utilize the energy wasted on racism. Juneteenth is a day that we pray for peace and liberty for all, a celebration of freedom. Now therefore, be resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Bradley Beach to hereby proclaim Monday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. As Juneteenth in the Borough of Bradley Beach, and encourage all citizens, young, old, to pay tribute to the journey. Embrace the past as well as the future that unity, respect, and appreciation brings, uh, dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. That's, um, our proclamations, uh, now go to approval of minutes, um. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, council meeting, meeting minutes, I have a second.
Second. Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the. May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three executive session.
Mr. Marco? Thank you. Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Uh, okay, uh, agenda number nine, uh, public comments relative to the agenda for tonight. A five-minute limit and a single instance to speak per participant, uh, whether in person or virtual. Erica, take it away, yes. It's on the agenda.
Yes. What? Public comments, right? Okay.
Just.
Good evening, I have a couple of questions regarding the bill list.
Yes.
Uh, I noticed that on page one. And it's Clark, in Hines. There's a February invoice and an April invoice. And the total amount is for seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-five cents. And it says special litigation expenses. What is the purpose of litigation? I mean.
Uh, as I described earlier, um, in the evening. Uh, the municipality is involved as almost every municipality in New Jersey is. Uh, with compliance, uh, with fair share housing requirements. That were originally set down by the council on affordable housing co-op and have now been taken up by the courts. Uh, a special master was named, uh, by the courts for the borough. To be able to oversee the negotiations and possible litigation. Between the borough and the Fair Share Housing Corporation. The court identified a special master. That special master is sort of like a judge. But in the process, the municipality has to pay for the time of that person. Clark Katon and Pence is the employer of the person, name I believe is Mary Beth Juanigan.
It is.
Um, who was named by the court to serve as the special master. These are the buildings that are coming in, and that is the reason why I indicated to council earlier, they needed to make. At least a thirty-five thousand dollar appropriation more into the legal services account in order to pay for the special master.
Could you please explain to me, master, I, I, I'm a little ignorant.
Well, the, the special master is the term that has developed over the last fifteen years or so. For people who are assigned by a judge to be their eyes, ears, and analysts. And that person acts as if they are the judge. And they oversee the negotiations that take place. Or they become a part of the litigation that eventually occurs before the judge that is in charge of this case.
But this is a firm that's in part, they're, they're an architectural firm.
Well, they're planners.
They're planners.
Yeah, and, and she is a planner, and she's been involved in affordable housing. For at least the last twenty-five to thirty years, I've been familiar with her name. Um, only when I came here that I realized that she had been identified as a special master.
Okay, and then again, I've noticed that it's a late invoice, February, okay, February, and here it is June.
The February invoice is not late.
It's not?
No.
If that's when they send it, that's.
Now, there is one other, and this is not to be personal about this person, but I noticed on page five. There is an individual that was providing the service and he's paid a thousand dollars. For Memorial Day Parade. But now, why is he being paid five hundred and fifty dollars for tourist development?
Uh, because that was for a different event. That was for the Mediterranean festival. The one thousand dollars was for two days of services at the Memorial Day Parade. And if you go further down, uh, the three hundred dollars, uh, he was hired to. Uh, provide music for a dance that was conducted by the recreation department.
Yes, but said. Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Mary Backstrom, uh, twenty eighteen Fourth Avenue, quick things, um. First of all, uh, I live on Fourth Avenue, and I love Fourth Avenue. I'm literally talking about the avenue. The people who did the roadworks and the touring and all that stuff, they, they worked very efficiently, um. And I saw them do it on Third as well. So, um, I just think that's a, I'm, I just want to say, they did a great job. And they did it in a nice manner. Second, this is for Erica, it's a tiny thing. There have been a couple occasions where, where comments, uh, were public comment, that people had their hands raised. And they eventually put them down, it's just, just keep an eye on them.
It's not during public comment, I'm keeping an eye on the Zoom.
Right.
They're putting their hands up during.
Right, okay, fair enough. All right, that's fair.
You know what it is, Erica, the cursor is a hand, so.
Mary, you talk about the white, little white hand or the. Yes. The white hand, oh, that's a curve, just seeing that. Oh, yeah, I, I thought, I thought that's what she was talking about, that, like, I agree with you.
See what I mean? I, I think Randy had his hand up all the time.
But that was only your one, it's, I'm coming, it's over.
Yeah, I saw, so.
Uh, hi, Greta McGuire, six ten, from the app, um. I just had some comments, I have the same question, thank you, Mr. Farabat, regarding the, uh, litigation with the architectural firm. Um, I just have some other questions about the bills list, um. The John Wire supplied the Bobcat, must have used some type of tractor or machinery. When it says unfunded, what does that mean?
What pages are on?
Oh, good question, I just noticed.
Um, let me say, I'm not entirely, uh, sure. What was purchased was essentially a mower, um, after three quotes were received, the John Wire.
Supplied.
Was, um. Uh, was the low quote of the three quotas, and, uh, oh, unfunded there means it was an ordinance. The ordinance has portions that are funded and portions that are unfunded. Um, and that's simply referring to the account that had the appropriation that is unfunded. At some point in the future, uh, there will be, uh, borrowing for that, but right now, it simply comes out of the capital fund.
Okay, and then, at that point, do we know where that money comes from? When that gets paid, because it's on the bills list now, it's getting paid, but then, do we know what fund is replenishing now?
But, I, I. It's maybe a little hard to explain, but when a bond ordinance is adopted by the council. And you go past, I believe it's twenty days. Um, you now have authorizations to spend. But that account, that ordinance is divided into the funded portion, which is generally the down payment.
Okay.
And the unfunded portion, which is the amount to be borrowed. Now, uh, the amount to be borrowed, given the fact that it's a two thousand twenty-one ordinance, probably was borrowed. But it still was identified as being unfunded.
So, would that be like a lease or financing the vehicle, like, is that what that means?
No, no, it's.
That's coming, borrowing from another account.
We're, we're, we're paying cash.
Okay.
Okay, we're paying cash. And the money comes from a bond ordinance that the governing body adopted. That is identified there as ordinance two, twenty twenty-one dash three. Um, and the unfunded was the borrowing portion of the, uh. Of the two-part ordinance. But if it's two thousand twenty-one, the probability is that that money has been borrowed as bond anticipation notes at a minimum.
Okay, this is definitely, I'll definitely save this for another day, so not for the public. I have a lot of questions. Um, okay, just a couple of other things, and. What I'm going to bring up, it's not about how much it is, it's more about the organization and. How this is being organized. So, for instance, formal promotions, a promotional company, I looked it up. You know, it's pens, scratch pad, toe, table runner, again, not a big deal, small, small things. Some are listed as office supplies, some are listed as miscellaneous. So, for something that's simple, you know, if it's a promotional pen, if it's a bunch of promotional pens. Maybe that could be under like promotional or marketing for recreation or tourism, or whoever the department is. That's like giving out pens or something. But just that miscellaneous put on there really just doesn't say anything, because maybe there's. Maybe there's fifty-dollar pens on every bills list, and then suddenly someone's like, why do we need so many pens all year long? So, that's my point there. As we're like, like, we have a cruiser bike, helmets, backpack. All listed under miscellaneous, I would assume that's for maybe the police department, but I could be wrong. But it's all listed as miscellaneous, so can it just be put for whatever department that's for, or whatever it's for? Um, the foremost promotions then later on has shipping charge for a hundred and three dollars. Promotional companies, millions of them out there have free shipping. So, again, to get back to our spend, I know this is minute, but if we can spend. Where we could get free shipping on things like this, it would make more sense to save money. Um, the next one, same thing, Oriental Trading. Uh, the total was a hundred thirty-one dollars. Again, pennies, it's not about the money. We paid twenty-nine ninety on shipping. There's a forty-nine dollar spend for free shipping on Oriental Trading, so why is there a thirty-dollar shipping charge and we spent over forty-nine dollars? So, again, not about the money, about the organization, about the spend, and about. Possibly there was no shipping charge, because it's a forty-nine dollar limit and we spent more than, so. That leads me to a trust issue, even though it's a twenty-dollar listing there. But it's listed as a shipping charge, which is not the shipping charge. It could, but again, you know, forty-nine dollars, we spent a hundred thirty-one, so. Um, uniforms, again, I know we need them, they're on almost every bills list. So, this one was very, was very specified, sometimes they're not, so I appreciate it that they were specified for what they were for, but again. You know, if maybe that's what's happening over time, is the organization is starting to happen. Mr. Farabat, your promises of working with us just made me wish you weren't an interim VA. Because I would love that, and I love the idea of that, but I'm hoping that we have a VA put in place. With years and years of experience, and that their resume is filled with. Knowing how to do a budget, knowing how to document spend. We need someone with experience beyond to fix the issues.
This is agenda, this is for agenda.
Bills list.
Okay, but. If you have questions on the bills, you have to answer it.
Well, this is part of it, because it's poorly done, the bills isn't poorly done, that's where my complaint lies. Um, and I will save my extra comment then for the end on that, so. I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
I have a question on the bills list, too. Uh, my name is Kristen Mahoney. My address is two hundred and rain. You can hear? Uh, let me move it closer to me, I'm vertically challenged. In the least. Uh, GovPilot, I, I know that we had a meeting, uh, a few months ago, um. Was this what was presented at that meeting, when we were talking about how to manage things, and we were talking about, is this gonna, uh. Usurp, you know, Bitley and things like that. Um, I see it on here, we, we have like a thirty thousand dollar spend for it under software and hardware. Um, I know that it's a municipality management software system, we have seven licenses for it. So what are we using GovPilot for?
Great, would you want to just take that?
It's, it's primarily used for uniform construction code, uh, fire prevention code.
Okay.
Um, other code enforcement activities. It's used for zoning. Um, I'm trying to remember. Oh, market title licenses. Uh, it has a series of modules that are related to, uh, block and lot issues.
Right, right.
Um, and there are several competitors out, um, special, special data logic is one.
Right.
Um, uh, jungle laser is another one. Um, but as I understand it, they were evaluated here.
Right.
Um, the town, I think, used to have special data logic and moved off of it. Uh, because of the expense of them to GovPilot. Uh, but it provides a data management capability.
I know you can get pet licenses, but then things like that. Uh, so this is our first year using it, then I'm, I'm supposing. So this is an initial license fee, it's not a yearly license fee, does anybody know?
I think this is the yearly license.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm sure we're gonna.
It's, it's the old with the same.
It was, yeah, okay, okay, well, we'll see how it goes, and hopefully it'll help us manage. Uh, some of the things we need to manage better. And then there are four thousand four hundred and thirty, it's under weapons, I usually. And then there are four thousand four hundred and thirty, it's under weapons, I usually would police department unless we, uh, maybe we have our own weapons. What, uh, is that just for new POs who've got new weapons or weapons agents or? I mean, I know we're not out here buying fourteen's.
I mean, probably, I mean, it's it's about time to qualify, we have to qualify.
Those you buy are the faulty.
That is typical. Police weapon, possible report.
Oh, that's four thousand.
Four thousand.
Or that was a lot, that's a lot handled for qualification.
It's, I can tell you from prior experiences, having gone through the questioning of a police department with a hundred and twelve officers, that I ended up having to bill that was somewhere in the order of eighty thousand dollars. So.
So now we're at her, so we're, okay. For self, right, I, you know, I did ask you a question about the, about three and a half months ago, I sent you an email, we have a follow-up, and still haven't gotten the answer. You could look at those, those emails. That would be fabulous to get an answer, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it so much.
Yes.
Nancy, now, Ocean Park on the news. I will be commenting on individual bills in a minute. But I would like to say that as I am the diagnosed negative patient. Every VA, every administration that you have had, has said that they would give more information on bills. And as we're going along, we're getting less. And let's start with page one, and what the lady said about the attorney, and what an excellent explanation you gave, Mr. Farabat, regarding the affordable housing, why could that not just have been in the description and we could have not even weathered up? It's beyond.
May I answer that question?
Sure.
Because the software doesn't present that capability.
Okay. I've been hearing that for years, and then we're getting in software every year, and then we'll change it every week. It's been just going past down the line. And if you, if you can put in a description for something else, like the pipe that we gave in Ocean Park, you can put in a description for this. Well, mine, okay. It's just mind-boggling, because then I will go to everything that of this wire said about the organization, all those things, miscellaneous, really? This is how come your budget doesn't work. This is where you cut expenses, and listen and pay attention. Mr. Caddan, are you still the borough attorney? Your sign says so. So on page nineteen, we're paying eighteen hundred dollars to the leaders, our borough attorney. I find that odd. And then also, we have thirty-four thousand dollars for railings that competitive dinner, we just didn't put any out of this time, spent thirty-four thousand dollars on railings that I believe were redone a couple of years ago. And perhaps if we had an ordinance that did not allow people to climb on the railings that was enforced, I mean, that would be, we need an ordinance to enforce, and an ordinance, maybe our railings wouldn't came in a break. Uh, we're spending six hundred and forty-five dollars on shirts. I'm glad it's going to Murray's, our business in town. What department? I, it just continues to go on and on. Are we offsetting any of that huge bill on the Ocean Park pipe? I bring that up in every meeting. I do not believe you should be approving these bills, I understand we're vaguely liable. But we need to stop buying and then approving, how many times have I said it? If this is a bad time for us, and we're trying to cut back, well, we're not trying to cut back, we know we should. Is it the time to spend three thousand dollars on plants? Yeah, they're beautiful, I, I mean, I'm not saying they're not, but is that a necessity when we have other necessities? Or things that you're claiming are necessities, I can go down every single page and show you where your descriptions are contradictory, or lacking, or dishonest. And I believe this borough needs to investigate dishonesty. Thank you.
Yes.
On a dream left, fourth working Martin Avenue, and it's gonna take thirty seconds to add something um to the discussion on um the chapter three ten. If we are considering, and this is on the agenda, so um, if we're considering including um not permitting uh weekend landscaping, professional landscaping, then I would suggest for the sake of parity, to also include um tree removal companies. Because that's a really loud noise.
Sure.
Um, at least as loud as the landscape. Um, so that's for weekends, and that's again, something that, you know, these tree companies would need to be advised that they are not permitted to do so. Uh, maybe shade tree, I don't know. So, uh, let's see. I also had some questions on the bills list, um, and some of them were answered. Um, but I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity to have an understanding of a real comprehensive spend, including labor, on some of our larger events, like Memorial Day, July fourth? Um, whatever contributions the borough has made, whether uh by manpower or um equipment to the BBVCA hundred and thirtieth um event last, last weekend? Is there a way, because when I see things in the bills list that reference some of the larger events, we're just seeing piecemeal based on that particular two-week period of bills. Um, so, Mr. Farabat, I'm asking, is there an opportunity to actually uh see an accumulation, a total cost of what we spend on Memorial Day from the borough, including labor? What the borough has um invested in the private event that took place over the weekend? I think residents who were not at that event.
There are two different questions, I think.
I'm, I'm asking for an accountability to understand what is spent on events, larger events in town. So, one is Memorial Day, July fourth, and any other large events where we're doing these big bashes. Um, you know, personally, I know that when times are tight financially for us, we hold back on certain things, or we cut costs, or we cut corners um in terms of spending, I, I'd like to know, rather than just seeing REITs and this and that for Memorial Day on this particular period of the bills list, to really see what, what we're spending, what we spent this year, what we spent last year for these events, and that includes whatever investment the borough has made in the private event that took place over the weekend.
Within the last month, I have suggested to the mayor and the council that um we ought to develop a policy along the lines of what you just suggested um regarding special events that fall into various categories. To be able to have a complete understanding uh among the mayor and council as to um what the actual costs are. As the result of either they being special events, people from the outside coming into the municipality, wanting to use its facilities, or people from within the municipality wanting to be able to conduct certain programs. Um, and uh that has begun, uh but we're not there yet. And doing that after the fact is difficult for what you just described. Doing it before the fact, which is what the policy is trying to create, would then achieve that objective.
And for the public to be, to see this. I mean, so to look at the bills list, it's hard for me to really understand whether we've overspent on some of these celebrations. And if, if, let's say, again, with overtime, with the DPW, because their manpower is often required for these events, um, the overtime cost that becomes part of the cost of the event. So I think it's really important for us to understand that when, and Bradley puts on a lot of events, and it's wonderful, it's, it's great in terms of the sense of community, but I think a lot of money is being spent, and perhaps we can be a little more prudent in the way that we spend it. Um, and even have some of the events, I'm not suggesting not have the events.
I understand your suggestion.
Right, okay. Is twenty twenty-three um one eighty-eight going to be discussed tonight, uh the property of Lorraine and demolition? Is that, I know it's on the agenda, is that?
Oh, yes, yes.
It is being discussed?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, I, my question is, what is the status of the dispensation of architectural elements in the building as it relates to demolitions?
Uh, it's in process, uh, the Ocean Grove Camp Meeting Association we met with, and um they identified one artifact.
Beyond that, so they want one artifact, I'm sorry, I. If they want, there are lots of valuable el- elements that the borough can capitalize on.
Correct.
Right.
So, uh, we've contacted a couple of salvage operations, number one and number two in the RFP that we're doing, that will have a salvage element in it.
And a, a bidding, a bidding.
Well, that'll be part of that, yeah, yes.
Okay, so all of that will be presented, because it's not a straight, obviously not a straightforward demolition.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, too, he on what just happened. Because of the added complexity that we've been able to identify in terms of uh developing the specifications, I was going to be uh requesting that um twenty twenty-three one eighty-eight uh be removed from this agenda, um as we are attempting to put together um an RFP for those uh services. Good, no, I knew that, I didn't know if you were gonna discuss that any further, that's why I said it was on the agenda. Yeah, and I was not gonna, you weren't gonna go into it. That was as much as I was going to say. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, okay. And then, and then to have it, and then to request of the governing body, they remove it, trying to get agenda. Okay, I didn't realize we were gonna actually not have that conversation, okay, thank you. Yes.
Uh, let me just have you pick, well, bring me out here. I, I go through the bills list and struggle with a lot of things too, which you have no idea where they're going or coming from. And I did notice that a few of the lines, when you're reading across, they actually hit the return button, zoomed over, and there's extra information added in other places, which should be for everything. Second thing is, on the bills list, I would like to see what's the receipts, what's the receipts for the bills, who pays and all that stuff, and also what's accounts receivable, you're making money every month, a little bit there maybe, from the rec department or beaches, everything, it should be posted every month, that the public has made where, around the council, college money is coming into the town. Looking at the um budget, it's even hard to read on the budget what the, what each department makes, because they didn't generate money, not every department, but certain departments in our town. Another thing I wanted to say about the noise level, I think that most people, unfortunately, live in a very nice neighborhood, if we need our own, make the noise, tell our neighbors and you know, try to be quiet after ten, and I think ten o'clock during summer months is probably appropriate, because otherwise, one of them would go in east, because they're noisy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
On the champion for eleven and a half, we're in that area. This is about uh resolution one eighty-eight. If you're gonna withdraw, I won't go blank on this, but when I'm chatting about the uh the value of some of the assets, such as stained glass windows, I've been doing some extensive research, trying to find out exactly the source of those stained glass windows, and in talking to stained glass experts and showing them images, we've discovered that one of the windows, at least, may be a Tiffany studio window. And just, I don't know if you read the press within the last couple of months, but a gentleman in Philadelphia bought from church for five thousand dollars, a couple of stained glass windows, which would just identify the auction as being Tiffany studio windows, and went for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I, you know, basically, there are, there are extraordinary assets in that, that building. The stained glass windows are top quality. They're really excellent. And also, the organ the ocean every association that doesn't have any interest in, is actually historically and uh very interesting, and it's actually a very valuable organ. It's quite huge, it's not just the display heights you can see over the altar, that uh the, the organ is buried in, in, in in the fabric of the building, in fact, or something that should certainly be uh not lost. The building itself should not be lost, and we are still actively trying to uh complete applications for historic registry, both in the state and federal. And we are working with Monmouth County. And I, I think you should be aware of that. This building is recognized not just as, as a historic asset, it is, it's an incredible asset for this town, and to, to try to sell it for profit, it's just criminal. Um, the process, to me, has not been fair. We were promised that there would be a presentation from the former DA uh in a workshop, on alternative uses for the property other than demolition that never came to pass. Former DA just went ahead to find out on possible costs of demolition, and did not look into the costs and benefits of any other yield or turn of processes which might have been presented to this community, and we could have decided intelligently what to do with the building, rather than rush demolition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the agenda? Yes.
I feel like we still talk about three nineteen, the lane, right?
No, we're talking about the agenda, any agenda items?
One eighty-eight, yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Bradley Beach. Just a couple of salient facts, which just sounds like a whole champion. In nineteen oh four, architect William Cottrell built a building in Asbury Park, which is the record that is examined on the national historic registry, the national historic registry. In nineteen hundred, Mr. Cottrell built the church at three nineteen for rent, designed the church in nineteen. A far more interesting building, as far as I'm concerned, than the one which exists in Asbury Park. However, we just, we deserve some consideration on trying to get this on the national registry, because it is, it is I think a terrific asset. Point Pleasant Beach, two weeks ago, Point Pleasant Beach, two weeks ago, or, or was it a process buying the National Guard Armory in uh Manaswara, it is but it's uh administered by this Point Pleasant Beach. Uh, everybody's on the same page, the mayor, the council, they're spending over a million dollars to buy a building. And uh, and, and it's gonna be, in effect, a community center, and they're gonna call it a community center, but they're gonna use all the facilities and upper meetings, lectures, whatever. Very similar to what we had thought was gonna take place here at three nineteen. My, my point, my point was Ocean Grove, that's, I'm switching here to Ocean Grove. They have the Great Auditorium. They have the Camp Meeting Cottage. They have the fields they just built. They have, those are specifically architecturally famous little town. We've got something just as good, maybe even better at three nineteen. And we're gonna, we're gonna knock it down. I'm sorry, I, I maybe this is rehashing some of the stuff, but uh I think it deserves some reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Fox on our channel, four one, Ocean uh. I'm just gonna follow up on the last couple of speakers. Shortly after the, the Methodist Methodist Church was purchased in twenty twenty, Mayor Engles had put out a message to the citizens of Bradley Beach, the volunteer, the former committee to restore and create a community center in church. I answered that call. And I swiftly put in touch with all the gang. And I swiftly put in touch with Paul Nicken. I meant with Paul at the time, in a five oh one seat, he was formed to generate revenue and carry out this task. It was my understanding at that time that the mayor and the council were a hundred percent behind this endeavor. At that time, there was never any question, and I recall that the town first protect the asset, a term that in the last year has been used a lot. For reasons never explained, this was not done. It is my belief that the people of this town have been misled over the past few years. And they've been told that public funding and the other grants were not available. That meantime contributions, the money contributions were not permitted. And that the building had to adhere to a hundred percent ADA compliant. Most if not all of this was an ad hoc. It is sad that in the same time that we celebrate the hundred thirtieth anniversary of the town. We are taking a vote to demolish a landmark that was built only six years after the formation of the town. I do not understand the, I do understand the non binding vote. But that, that was not the spent time. Since that time, to my knowledge, there has not been any effort to explore any other options or revisit funding. I would also ask, uh, Mr. Cannon, can you explain why one of the council members cannot vote on this fiscal matter? And what precedent and evidence to do that, or not, or not allow it?
You mean, uh, Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Uh, he lives next door to the property and there's case law and there is it. Uh, Mr. Weber lives next to the property, and more specifically, illegal, do you have the two hundred feet of the property? Uh, and therefore, and is not able to participate in what's the project might be or otherwise, because of the courts have said he has personal interest in it.
But is that, is that purely from a zoning, or is that? Because, because I see this as, it's a, it's a money thing, not just the zoning thing, so is that zoning?
Has to do with the proximity of the land, so that the, yes, I could find the case for you.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So sure, do you have your email address I can email to you for that, but long story short, then there was a case in which, uh, there was a council that made, uh, previously block the property into a public park. And there's really a challenge that action because they thought it cost too much money in the town. And uh, the council, there's been two hundred feet apart, which turns to be a conflict, that's, that's the source of.
Rather words, the mayor or no other council member could vote on anything pretending that any property would enjoy to be their property.
I wouldn't say anything, I would say. So. It depends upon what you're doing with the property, I mean, anything with any property is very relevant, I mean, what the property is gonna be building into something else, making it something else. All that is clearly a conflict, just like if you're somebody sitting on the zoning board and your neighbor comes to an application because it directly affects you, you have to accuse yourself of that situation as well, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll give my.
Usually, I'll have you rated because so you'll have to say it out loud, there's a lot of mic though.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay. Okay, can I, can I ask just one quick question about the budget also? Uh, could you clarify when you say eleven point six percent increase, you know, for taxpayer? Is that all on your overall tax bill, or is that only on, it's only on municipal?
Municipal, municipal, the total tax bills right now sitting at about six point three percent.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, so it will be only on that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's welcome. Yes.
Heard Kenny, sixteen friendly, I have a couple of comments and questions about budget. Um, first, um, I think it's really sad that the council tonight added, um, actually draft an ordinance to control spending in the town. Um, I think that's asked backwards, um, that really should be coming from the CFO, the mayor, and the, the VA, and I apologize, and during the intro. But your previous VA, you know, when you have cost overruns, you're, you're blowing through money.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be the, the, the four members up here that have to wake up people just to tell you to stop spending money. That anyone who's run a business, run the home, you know, you know who controls the purse strings. And to sit here and just say we're gonna spend it eleven point six, that's okay, that's not the way to do it. Well, the second question, I've been now to probably five straight meetings here, and for some reason, the CFO never shows up. Instead, I understand that, you know, that's not a question. But, you know, if he's gonna teach at Rutgers and he has a job here, he should be giving ones back here if he's not showing up. Sorry, that's a. Um, I asked at the last meeting, regarding legal expenses and budget. Uh, the mayor has not publicly stated yet who's paying for his legal fees against the council. If it is the town, please just tell it. If he does lose the case, will we be reimbursed? Just a question. One other thing regarding the liquor license. I noticed that, um, there's no renewal here for the movie theater.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Okay, so with a liquor license renewal yearly, there's three different things that the licensee has to do. They have to go on to what's called the ABC Posty website and pay skinny fee, which is two hundred dollars. Then they have to pay a municipal fee, which is um twenty-five hundred dollars. And then they have to wait for something what's called retail, uh, ABC Retail Tax Clearance to clear. Um. The, the movie theater was, was late on. That's, it'll be, it'll be on the next agenda, that, that's my last license.
Okay, well, my question is, is this. You know, have we, have, so do they own this liquor license, or they're reserved, they're, they're promising they're gonna pay it, or where do we stand? My other question is, this thing keeps dragging on. Um, I spoke to Mr. Bowles, he's calling me twice. Um, he's telling me it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, but I really think it's unfair to the town, if, if they. Because they're late and there's a liquor license sitting out there, I'm sure there's other people who, you know, in times of, that can be money, I'm sure there's some restaurants here that love that liquid license, so.
Licensee have up until June thirtieth to get everything in order, to get those, those three things in order and get a resolution passed.
All right, um, I still don't understand, but anyway, I, I trust that you're going to, but, um. You know, again, you know, it's time, if they owe us money, we should be ponying up, and again, this is just other things we should be looking.
Well, they, they paid their municipal fee, they did pay their municipal fee.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Can I just get your address again, I'm sorry.
Sixteen friendly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, we have. On the board, we have.
You have, Randy.
Yeah, question?
Randy? Randy?
Benel, five oh six, five oh six Third Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Thank you.
Everybody can hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Larry. When will the sewer project be done?
Done.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, when will the sewer project be done?
I spoke with the engineer, Mr. Benel, I spoke.
No, I asked Larry, I, no, Mr. Farrenbach, please, I asked Larry.
I didn't have a chance.
You missed, I didn't have a chance.
Larry, when will it be done?
I did not have a chance to give the mayor or any of the council members the update I received late this afternoon. From the engineer, uh, uh, Mr. Freya, may I provide you the answer?
No, I'd like to hear it from Larry because he is the guy who runs this town and he should know the answer to this.
I'll have to defer to Mr. Farrenbach because.
Okay, so what you're saying is you're, you're the mayor of the town and you don't know the answer?
Uh, yeah, that's right, because.
Okay, okay, now my second question, here's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it on the first.
Larry, here's my second question. You have my first question, you don't know the answer. Okay, you don't know the answer, so you're not doing your job.
Well, actually.
Second question, Larry.
Providing incorrect.
Larry, I'm, I'm.
I don't wanna provide an incorrect.
Clock back on my five minutes and you can speak to whatever you want, and then when you're done, I'll ask my second question.
Well, so the que, the answer to your first question is, there's one piece of the sewer, sewer schedule that, um, has to be completed, and that's. Grating and seeding and, um. That, I'm sure that's what Mr. Farrenbach got an update on, but if you don't care to hear it from me, I don't know the answer to that question because Mr. Farrenbach deals with the engineer on that.
And you should know the answer, Larry, you're the guy who runs the town, second question. Second question. You had a one point five million dollar spend increase. To our budget that you presented. The primary platform. For your campaign. As mayor of this town. Was. Making Bradley Beach more affordable for the middle class. How is a one point five million dollar increase, that's over ten percent, how does that make Bradley Beach more affordable for the middle class? Give me, give me a two sentence answer, if you can.
So, the, the, the answer to your question is that if you look at, i- it's not a one point five million dollar increase.
Okay, enough, I, you answered my question, you're lying. Thank you. And everybody knows the answer, thank you very much, Larry, I'm done. We're all. Same. Um, okay, uh, let's get it, the next, any other questions?
All the questions, it's with the next agenda item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, for you and the members of the council, Mr. Freya reported this afternoon that regarding the project. Um, he has been in touch with the contractor, the contractor has informed him that he will be back next week for the purposes of. Finishing the project.
The landscaping.
The landscaping, which is the only remaining thing for the project. Um, he also indicated that, uh, the information he gets from contractors is generally right. About eighty percent of the time, so he's not willing to literally put his name on the line for the promise that the contractor made. But that he will stay on top of it and will try to make sure that the contractor is here, uh, by next week to begin finishing that element of the job.
Thank you. Okay. As, as. As we know, um, the primary part of that job, I'll, I'll spend ten seconds because we have other things to talk about. Was clearly to get, um, the, this spring was to get the concrete and the paving done, that's been completed, um. And, um, as I think Miss Duffy sitting her back, she's very happy with her, uh, with her Fourth Avenue. Okay, uh, let's move to introductions, we have, um, twenty twenty-three nine ordinance amending. Chapter three ten noise, revised, revised, general ordinances to update noise regulations to address current issues and nuisances within the borough, especially during summer season. So.
I say we're still working on it, and I have absolutely no problem tabling this, but, but to your, from other people, what they think.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, it's disappointing, uh, when we table it, we lose two more weeks. Uh, to revisit this, you know, at our next meeting. Uh, and, you know, some of the more significant elements of this particular ordinance were, uh, addressing noise during the summer. So the more time we lose, the, you know, we have to introduce an ordinance, then we have to wait two more weeks to adopt. Then we have an unstoppable period of another few weeks. Um, so. We're gonna try to get this done as soon as we can to capture at least some of the summer, but, but I agree, I don't think there's anyone in this room or anyone on. Who would disagree that we, we still have some kinks to work through before we get this right.
So you wanna make a motion? Other than anybody else wanna?
I, I just, I wish we could get this done, but I, there are changes that need to be added and.
Okay, I will make a motion that we table ordinance. Twenty twenty-three dash nine ordinance amending chapter three ten noise.
Second.
Mr. Marco? Thumbs up, thumbs up, Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. Um, which twenty twenty-three oh eight, the bond ordinance, uh, providing for store improvements along Park Place Avenue, having appropriate, appropriate five hundred thousand thereof. And authorized, which means four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of bonds and notes. The financing portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the borough Bradley Beach and County. I'm sorry?
Do you put your microphone a little closer, they can hear you back there?
Uh. So, um, this, so I'll make a motion to open the adoption hearing for twenty twenty-three oh eight.
Second.
Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
I got confused, sorry. Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Uh, anything from the council?
Quick question, is this one that's, it's just a couple of blocks along Park Place, correct?
Right.
And then on Fifth Avenue, how much is Fifth Avenue?
Um, main to that.
Um, which is one block, which is one block.
So this is just, just for the, for folks playing along at home, it's five hundred thousand dollars, and you're talking about this, doing this work for basically three blocks of town. It's sewer and resurfacing, now. So, at least we're getting sewer out of there.
Any other comments? Any public comments? Okay, then I'll move to close the adoption hearing and move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh eight. I'll make a motion, any second.
Second.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Denoble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. Uh, agenda item number eleven, uh, there's a number of, um. Primarily seasonal, uh, adjustments and pay, um. For, uh, for another beach recreation and one season will be done. Um, we have, let's move to number twelve resolutions, consent and individual consent agenda. We have, um, a number of items. We have the, um, bill list. Twenty twenty-three, one seventy-eight, uh, twenty twenty-three, one seventy-nine is approval of the annual renewal for alcoholic beverages. Liquor license for glass and corolla, TA Bradley Liquors. Twenty twenty-three, one eighty, approval of the annual renewal of alcohol beverage license for Swami Sharing. Incorporated Shore Wines and Liquors, twenty twenty-three, one eighty-one, approval of annual renewal of alcohol beverage license for. ATK of Bradley Beach, otherwise known as the Bradley Beach Bowl. Twenty twenty-three, one eighty-two, approval of the annual renewal of alcohol beverage liquor license for Portuguese Shamrock LLC TA, also known as the Elbow Room and Kitchen. Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, one eighty-three, approval of the annual renewal of alcohol beverage liquor license for Uva. On Main Street LLC, also known as Paganos, who are restaurant and wine bar. Twenty twenty-three, one eighty-four, approval of the annual renewal of alcohol beverage license for Bar and Grill Incorporated. And twenty twenty-three, one eighty-five, approval of the annual business, annual renewal of alcohol beverage liquor license for Gardsd LLC, also known as Garge's Tavern. I will make a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda grab a second. Second.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. Uh, individual resolutions, we have, uh, three, uh, the first is twenty twenty-three, one eighty-six, uh, approving a block party request on five hundred block of Burlington Avenue. For Saturday, Jan, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, from five to nine PM with a rain date on. Saturday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three, one eighty-six. Second.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes, twenty twenty-three, one eighty-seven, approval, approval of temporary budget appropriations, make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three, one eighty-seven. For the second.
Second. Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. Noble?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes, twenty twenty-three, one eighty-eight, I'll make a motion to, um, table that.
Second.
Um, Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Denoble?
Yeah.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. Uh, next agenda item is, um, excuse me, one second, lost my place, I think it's. There are no announcements, uh, so we go to mayor and council reports. Um, let's start with, um. Councilwoman Denoble, please.
Okay. So, the Bradley Beach Shetree Commission had a meeting on June seventh, they had six applications, they all paid the fifty dollar fee, we thank them because, um. Those go, that all the money goes towards the replenishment of trees. We have, uh, eight wishing trees requested so far, we have no honor me tree requested, this really helps subsidize. The planting of the trees, if anybody would like an application for an honor tree or wishing me, wishing tree, please contact me and I'll give it to you after the meeting. That'd be great, also, really great feedback on the tree of the month. Um, it's the corner of Burlington. Um, it's the corner of Burlington and Pacific, it's a blackjack oak. I, um, got to meet with the, the, the parasols, which have. Um, a beautiful, beautiful property and a family with deep Bradley roots. Does he want to do that? So, um, it's on Facebook, check it out, beautiful, great looking tree. So then with the school, let's see, the, um, the Washington trip was a huge success. Even though they lost half a day because of the smoke. It was a great time had by all. The, um, the dare program had a ceremony and the students graduated from the dare program, congratulations to them. The third grade had a civic field trip to the Borough Hall. The presentation was made by Mayor Fox on how government is structured and works. I would have loved to attend it as a councilwoman, but unfortunately I was not invited. Um, the PTA postponed the school carnival to June third. And it will be held at the Rex Center, the eighth grade graduation is tomorrow night, school's out for summer. Tourism, there's a lot of events coming up. June nineteenth to September first at the gazebo. They'll have Mondays opera and hustle, hustle lessons, Tuesdays salsa, line dancing. Fridays DJ J, July sixth is, um, oh, also this coming week, June twenty-fourth to the thirtieth. The Alliance Week will have something every night. Uh, July sixth through the August seventeenth. Thursday concerts at Newark Avenue Beach. July fifteenth through August. Second, five P M Saturday, summer concert series. Fireworks are going to be held July third, July fourth, the Chuck Lambert will be playing at the gazebo. July ninth is Park Fest, July thirteenth through the nineteenth is the Shakespeare Festival at the gazebo. August first, National Night Out at the beachfront, August nineteenth is Pirate Day, twelve to three. August sixth and the twentieth, the Sunday concerts in the park. September second and third is a concert in Riley Park, Labor Day, that's Labor Day weekend, also various five K runs throughout the summer. And I'm looking forward to all this, and I love a party, but I'm just not sure how we're paying for all these events. They're expensive and they're on weeknights and weekends that all, will also entail public works. What I would suggest is that we start self-funding these. These programs with sponsors, um, have our DPW lease and other expenses covered. Porta potties, barricades, they all cost money and we should not be paying for it as taxpayers. Also, I'd like to update people on the business administrator. A lot of people have been asking me where we stand, and I'd like to thank our interim business administrator Greg Farimah. For doing such an excellent job for the past ninety days. Unfortunately, he's scheduled to finish his duties on or about July, uh, June thirtieth, which is quickly approaching. We appreciate him stepping up and assisting us in this transitional time period. Our previous business administrator Ken Humphrey resigned on February eighth, giving the mayor and council thirty days notice until March tenth. I sent Mayor Fox an email on February tenth informing when the process would begin. The advertisement was then published on the League of Municipalities website on February thirteenth. Mayor Fox's public posting had no requests for actual business administrator experience or any educational degree requirement. We received twenty-three resumes, some, some, from very qualified individuals, many with. Extensive business administrative experience and master degrees in public administration. We interviewed three proposed finalist candidates chosen by Mayor Fox only. On the afternoon of May fourth, and we as council members gave our advice and consent to the mayor for one highly educated. And experienced candidate out of the three that he presented to us. We expected the nomination of this individual to be on the May tenth Borough Council agenda. Now, we are almost six weeks past that date and no nominations have been made by Mayor Fox. In addition, we are now at a hundred and twenty-five days since Mayor Fox has given notice of Miss Humphrey's resignation. This is far too long to leave the borough of Bradley Beach without the full-time administrative coverage it requires and deserves. There is no reasonable excuse for the mayor's delay of over four months, and I would like to make a motion. For a vote of no confidence in Mayor Fox's handling of the business administrator search. Do I have a second?
Second.
Eric?
Mister Marco?
Abstained.
Mister Noble?
Yes.
Mister Gubatose?
Yes.
Mister Weber?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
I'll abstain, um, and I, I, I haven't. Find out at this moment. Um. Except to say that, um. But I won't comment, nevermind. Um, is that it?
Yes, and, and that completes my report, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Gubatose?
Hey, I have, uh, as liaison to the police, I have a police report. Uh, a subject was arrested while driving while intoxicated. Two juveniles were arrested for stealing an unlocked bicycle from a residential yard. Another juvenile was arrested during a separate incident for receiving stolen property. Eluding and obstructing the administration of law after being stopped in a motor vehicle stolen from Howell Township. An officer from our K nine unit was deployed to assist Asbury Park in a traffic stop. And three individuals were arrested on active contempt. Of court warrants. Chief Guida would also like to invite everyone to a meet and greet with him and members of the police department. Next Saturday, June seventeen. At the Perfect Per Cafe on Main Street. Uh, the police will be there from ten A M until one P M. Again, that's June seventeen, Saturday. Ten A M to one P M. Complete details can be found on the police department's Facebook page. Thank you Detective Lieutenant Browning for providing me with that update. Um. As the liaison to the Silver Lake Commission, I just want to let folks know that the Silver Lake Commission. Is meeting on, uh, next on June twenty-first. Um. And. Two, two significant things that they plan to be, uh, addressing in, in this upcoming meeting. One is they're looking for New Jersey Department of Transportation, um. Funding opportunities. Uh, my understanding is they're actually working with our Borough Administrator, Mister Faribault. Uh, and they actually submitted paperwork. On June third emphasizing that they are seeking funds for winter, for winter storm fence replacement. And for plantings in the Bradley Beach Park. Um, the walking path concept was eliminated from the proposal and. For those of you who have been listening to my updates over the past year. Uh, it seems, uh, we've gone back and forth on the walking path, but it was officially eliminated from the, uh. From the, uh, application. And I believe CME has been involved in that process, well, I should. Call out, uh. Uh, Ben Matlock. Um, also, the other concern that will be addressed, uh, this coming week, uh, this coming meeting. Is that the geese. Are becoming a bit problematic as they return from their winter habitat. Um, so the commission's gonna explore working with between, uh, Brad, Bradley Beach and Avon. To come up with a potential natural repellent that they might be able to use to. Retard the, the spread of the geese. So, uh, that's my Silver Lake update. Um. I was, I, I wanted to, uh, just briefly follow up on, uh, two things, one, uh, regarding. CME, but I wanted to address this tower business administrator. Um, Mister Faribault, uh, CME provides monthly updates and I, I recently responded inappropriately, I probably should. Have got through you rather than to CME, but specifically, uh, I, I'd like to have a better understanding. What the borough is planning to do with CME, um, regarding. Putting out, uh, uh, an RFP for, um, garbage recycling services. Because I was a little surprised, I know we get this reported every month or every other month, but. I was a bit surprised to see that the borough is planning to do this and we really haven't discussed it publicly.
Um, as I understand this, walking into it later. Um. There was a desire to look at the possibilities of using a. Uh, an outside contractor to control costs. Um, I don't know if that originated, uh, from one or more members of the governing body. Or it originated from previous administrator in response to questions that arose from the governing body. Um, I am trying to arrange for a meeting of staff people. Who are, um, either affected by or affecting this particular item. To determine, uh, what the, uh, advantages and disadvantages are of either approach. Um, and then have that. Uh, um, in a package that can be provided to the governing body. So that they can decide if they are interested in pursuing this. Course of going out for an RFP or not. I shouldn't say an RFP. And solid waste is a bid, so going out for a bid or not going out for a bid. And there are certain potential consequences if the municipality chooses to do that. And we need to be sure that we don't put. The borough in some potentially libelous condition. As the result of going out and then deciding not to pursue it. So, um, we've got to deal with that, uh, because frankly, I was shocked. When I saw that, um, that was being worked on, uh, because watching. Uh, the reactions of a number of administrators and managers over the past. Year and a half when they have been getting renewals from their private contractors, um. Basically saying that they've been seeing anywhere between, uh, thirty and. More than a hundred percent increases in the costs of it, um. So what we will do is we will do that analysis, develop a report. And then provide that to the governing bodies as a suggestion as to how to proceed.
Okay, thank you, I. I share the similar bias to what you just described, I. I mean. There's part of me that is very anxious to see your report be, because I'd like to see if there's something that will surprise me. Uh, what I expect is that thi- this is. Uh, largely a waste of our resources to, and explore this. Unless we're going to seriously look at outsourcing to a firm that might, that might, we might spend over a million dollars. Uh, probably well over a million dollars. And then I have to also deal with whatever ramifications that might need to. Borough employee staffing, because if we're hiring outsiders, that means we'll have to do something with our current staff, so. I'm. Against echoing what I said earlier, uh, in the day. Uh, I don't think every spend item is, uh, going to necessarily, that we cut is going to necessarily deprive our residents of. Of services, I think this is an example where. Uh, with all due respect, Mister Matlock, it's not your fault that we asked you to do this. But, uh, I think this is, uh, an exercise of futility and I don't know how much we're spending.
Well, I, I, I would, I would argue that and I'll, I'll, I'll give it to why, um. There, there isn't only an inside-outside element of this, there's also. How can you, um, look at the process and significantly automate it or improve it? So, my involvement in this conversation, um, was back to, um. Probably. Sometime last year and the question was. Could we automate this process? Um, a, a number of municipalities have, they call it a one-armed bandit, a, um. Uh, a truck that actually picks up your waste and gets rid of it, um, we look at. We were also looking at the time and we made some good improvements, um. We were getting some short-term disability issues with some of our, um, uh, waste guys. Because we didn't have a clear, um. Set of. Procedures around bulk. Uh, pickup, which we've cleaned up dramatically and our bulk pickup now is. Done systemically, either in the municipality, on the street. Uh, at specific times or at the yard. Um, that's cut down on our, um, short-term disability, we've had employees hurt because they're doing the traditional. Uh, lifting of heavy weight. So, um, you know, and, and this is a back of the napkin, but, um, we could probably get to an automated system. Within about a three-year payback. Uh, which would eliminate about. Six to seven people in the context of physically lifting garbage and then putting into trucks. We can then redeploy those folks, um, in other parts of public works potentially, or, or cut, uh, costs. So that is an option, an opportunity we should look at as we're doing this, um, so, I don't think it's. It, it's, it's not only just outsourced in-source, you gotta have those reference points of what's the cost today? What's an outsourced model, what's an automation model, so that's the analysis that, um. Has to ensue from my perspective.
So. First and foremost. An exercise of this undertaking, I would have thought would at least been shared with the council, just to. Talk about the strategic vision of. Automating waste and recycling pickup. Secondly, I only know the. I know only know a few years ago, four or five years ago now perhaps, when we, when we moved. Inside, we, uh, fired the, or did not rehire the existing contractor. Uh, their bid at that time, five years ago, six years ago, was over a million dollars. And we deemed that we, the, I was on the council, we deemed that to be. Too cost prohibitive. Uh, it was thirty percent increase.
Yeah, it was, it was about a three hundred thousand dollar increase.
But it's over a million dollars.
Okay.
Point being, it should be well over a million, perhaps, posing in a two million, if we were to look at similar scope of services. Today, I also know that at least the DPW salaries in the current fund. I know there are allocations to the beach utility as well, but the current fund is one point one million. DPW's total salaries in the current fund. Um. That current fund includes waste and, and recycling. You know, removal, uh, they certainly have. Additional salaries, I don't know the breakdown, it's not provided to the council, uh, in, in, in our photo reporting. Mister Faribault has shared some with me personally, but there are extra dollars. Of DPW salaries and wages assigned to the beach and some assigned to the sewer. Bottom line is, I don't know how we're gonna somehow make this, uh, uh. Paid for itself within three years when it, any cost would have to exceed the cost. It, of the total salaries and wages that we're charging for DPW now in the current fund. So, again, I, I look forward to seeing this analysis, but I have a very strong. Uh, belief that this is going to be a waste of borough resources, and I'm really hopeful that, uh. That any external experts that we hire to, to perform this will be held to a fairly strict. Be, be basis, because. I think we're spending money once again where it doesn't make sense. Um, that's, that's my take on that, and my final question as part of. My, uh, comments and, and report is, uh, Mister Far, Faribault, I was, I was actually very excited to hear. That, um, that you at least are talking with the mayor about developing a policy for tracking the cost of the number of these events. Uh, you mentioned earlier, uh, a questioning.
Well, send it out to all five of you.
Okay, I, I, I missed it, I, I, I didn't pick up on it, but, um. But I'm very anxious to see that, and I'm wondering, um, can we, whatever you're planning to do there. Is it something we could expand to actually take a step back and look at the broader bill system, address some of the, the other concerns that were raised this evening? Cause you're talking about helping us track event costs, which is great. But to the extent there are other opportunities to fix Edmonds, uh, reporting.
Let me say. I have worked in thirty municipalities, one way or another. I have never, ever seen the number of questions that arise in this place regarding a billist. Um, I have never seen the number of questions about the descriptions that are involved in here. Um, I can tell you personally, having dealt with admins in most of these jurisdictions. That I personally had somewhat the same complaints. Because, um, going through and trying to understand what a particular department may be purchasing. Um, is limited. You need to understand the code of the department to know which department it's coming from. You need to know the coding of that particular municipality that they're using. Uh, because so much of it is based on, on numbers or sometimes a letter or two before the numbers. Um. The miscellaneous that was described, discussed tonight is a sub-account that is in every municipal. Departmental account and is used because there are so many varieties of things that people purchase. That. That it can't be covered by the chart of accounts that is available from the state. The state provides what is called the flexible chart of accounts. I refer to it as the fixed chart of accounts because it's the only chart you can use. And there are limited ways in which one can improve on the descriptions. Given the limited space that exists in the admin system to be able to change these. Will we look at it? Yes, we will look at it. Where will that be in terms of a priority list with the volume of things that a place of four thousand people? Or forty-two hundred has before it? I don't know. I'm not sure it's that high.
Well, thank you. As you've seen in your few months working with us, we probably get ten to fifteen minutes, if not more of questions. Every and it's not questions about specific items, it's often questions about the descriptions and as you said, it's far more than you've experienced elsewhere. I've sat here and listened to them long before you joined us, as you can imagine. And I and I have been a bit frustrated by the fact that administratively we. We haven't seemed to attempt to address it, so so I'm encouraged to hear that we can at least look at it and perhaps. Despite the system's limitations, there might be opportunities for us to. Put some coding in in this fixed structure that you described that would address some of the issues. I mean, you're gonna have to look at that for tracking the events. I I was only thinking if there's a way to expand that scope a little and be able to report back to our residents that. Hey, we made some improvements and these are still the limitations we face. It sounds like we might be able to do that.
What I was saying about the special events is. The attempt would be to be able to do this in advance, identify what is happening. In a in a prospective fashion. It is the time and energy it takes trying to do it retrospectively that is difficult. But if you set up essentially a formula in advance and the information is laid out in advance in that formula. That's a whole lot easier to do and that's the way I'm trying to approach this. Not go back and look what the other ones may have caused, but only forward and trying to identify.
But that process might also include more consistent coding. Okay.
I I don't know, but it could.
Okay. We'll probably, as as the council come back to you with maybe a more formal recommendation, but. But the idea would be if you're already going down that path, you might be able to guide us as to what specifically you can and cannot do. I just want to make sure we take action. Thank you. That concludes my comments and questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Sure thing. Believe it or not, we even had a meeting since we had Memorial Day. Memorial Day was great, right? It was great. I want to thank every single one of our volunteers that helped make that day great because it was great. At the same time, I support all these efforts and inquiries. And inquisitions or whatever you want to call them, what does this cost us? Because we can do these great events, but everybody deserves to know what they cost the town. And we decide like, is this good? Do we want to do this? Do we have to do it differently or spend less money? Similarly, the hundred thirtieth anniversary was great. I had a fantastic time and I again want to thank every single person that volunteered at that event because it was really, really great. If you were not there, you may not know that there was a trivia game regarding Bradley Beach history. And if you were there, you may not have gotten all the answers. But this is one of the many services that I provide. So here they are and the answers. And there's fourteen of them, so we're gonna we're gonna take a while for this. What was the original name of Fletcher Lake? And that was Goose Pond, but they probably would have accepted Duck Pond as well. Which early family had the first motor car, first building lit by electricity and first telephone in town? And that was William and Ella Painter, and that's painter spelled with a Y. You're all learning history. You guys can take notes. It's okay. What organization funded the creation of the Bradley Beach Library in nineteen thirteen? That would be the Women's Improvement League. Which famous Hollywood heartthrob graduated from BBGS, the grammar school? In nineteen twenty-two, so that would be Caesar Romero. That's everyone knows that. Who was the first postmaster of Bradley Beach? That was Catherine E. Bickerton. I'm just surprised it's a woman. That's that's fantastic. Okay. I have no idea what this has to do with Bradley Beach, but what show slash movie opens with the song Summer Love It? That would be Grease. I don't know what that has to do with Bradley Beach, but I'm somebody maybe something about. What number one beach-related song topped the charts in nineteen sixty-three? That would be Surfing USA. Again, I don't know if that has to do with Bradley Beach, but that's okay. Which famous actor, everyone's gonna get this, from Neptune was lifeguard in Bradley Beach? Exactly. And bonus point, I will say, he saw his first movie at our movie theater here. What luxurious Bradley Beachfront Hotel was destroyed by fire in nineteen seventy-four? The Lorraine. This is also the Bradley Hotel. I don't know where was Bradley?
Right across the street.
It was across the street. Okay. Which Cincinnati Reds baseball player has ties to Bradley Beach? Exactly. Pat Cassillo, if it's a mistake, to steal, anyway. Okay. What Bradley block appears on the cover of Bon Jovi's Slippery When Wet album? I am a rock and roll fan. I did not know this at all. The answer is Second and Ocean Avenue.
He lived there, the second floor, the back.
I heard like his mom had a house there or it's just it was him? Who was William Bradner? And the answer is founder of Bradley Beach, which was then called Ocean Park. Even though it's named after Bradley, whatever. What store was at the heart of North Bradley? They said North Bradley, like there is a North Bradley. Anyway, what what stores at the heart of North Bradley on the corner of Newark and Central from the late? Fifties to the late seventies? The answer is Virgils. What did Virgil sell? I don't know.
Everything.
Everything, okay. Finally, which wealthy Bradley Beach summer resident was a New York City brush? Manufacturer, New Jersey State Senator and real estate developer, and the answer is James A. Bradley. So now you know. Okay. And I'm just getting going here. Oh, so congratulations to Joy and Todd Walk. They were here before they were in the back of the room. I think they're on the hit for the budget. And everybody at their table, there's this big Brindley Avenue table because they got most of the answers right and they won the prize. Which was like lottery tickets. Well, I guess I guess we would have heard it say one thing. Okay, I'm gonna read the fire, fire and first aid report right now. Thanks for sending it to me. For the operational period that ended today, the squad responded to eighteen calls, eighteen day calls and fourteen night calls. Or thirty-two calls, six medical, seven were fire calls. The squad responded to two mutual aid calls in Avon for swimmers in distress. And transported one swimmer to the hospital. The squad conducted three drills for the safety and education of the membership. The squad supplied medical overwatch for Memorial Day Festival as well as participating in the Memorial Day Parade. And the memorial service in Riley Park, the Avon Five K Race and the Bradley Beach Hundred Thirtyth Anniversary Celebration. The squad is proud to announce it is also celebrating an anniversary. It is ninety years, it it's ninety years of continuous volunteer service to the citizens of Bradley Beach. From June thirteenth yesterday, nineteen thirty-three to June thirteenth twenty twenty-three. Happy anniversary. So I say in honor of their ninetieth anniversary, everybody should send the first aid squad ninety bucks. How's that? That would make them feel good. All right. Fire department for the operational period that ended today. Department responded to seven requests for the department. They conducted one training drill for the safety and education of the member. They participated in the same events, Memorial Day Festival, Memorial Day Parade. Delivering the veterans and firefighters memorial service in Riley Park. The department officers and members wish the Bradley Beach First Aid Squad many more years of dedicated service to the community for their ninetieth anniversary. And congratulations to our newest firefighter, Kevin J. Frederick, as he graduates from the fire. Training Academy this evening. The departments both fulfilled one hundred percent of their assignments for this operational period. We are still looking for volunteers for the fire and first aid. We offer free training for qualified individuals. Anyone who should make to volunteer for either. Application can be found on the borough website and of course, the cooperation exists between the fire and first aid squad. That is allowing us to keep answering the citizens' needs for medical care and fire protection at no cost. Twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Okay, so that was fire and first aid. I'm gonna move on to trees. Jane mentioned trees. Oh. Because I just talked about the Hundred Thirtyth Anniversary. We are honing in, the Shade Tree Commission is honing in. On some kind of plaque or recognition to recognize all those trees that are older than the town, the trees that were here first. We were just looking for a cost-effective plaque. When we find that, we are gonna ask you if you have a big. You know what tree in your yard and we were gonna see if it's older than the town. We have ways of measuring this and. That tree will get a plaque, so that's that's coming. But on the shade tree directly. You know, I just, my comments are like, we are barely keeping up, meaning yes, we planted twenty trees in the spring. But just at this last meeting, like Jane said, there was a six applications that was to take down eight trees. Keep in mind on top of that, we have all these green ash trees, which if they're not, these are street trees. If they're not diseased now, they are going to succumb to the Emerald Ash Bore eventually, and they're all gonna have to come down. You have those trees. All over town. So yeah, we're planting trees, but I feel like we're we're barely keeping up, so. Help us out, put in an application, put a tree in your planting strip if you have a vacancy there. One other tree, the mayor and I just recently discussed, discussed improvements to Lake Terrace Park. And I brought up that there are several trees of heaven there. This is that bad, nasty invasive tree that the spotted lantern flies love. So we're gonna look for an opportunity when we do that work on Lake Terrace Park, if we can take down those trees around the. Park side of that chain link fence, that would be a good thing. So maybe that can happen in the fall. Fletcher Lake Commission, they have been busy beautifying around the lake. You may have noticed there's new potted plants and these decorative planters. They work very hard on that. They're very proud of that. So if you, and there's also new benches around the lake, around Fletcher Lake, thanks to our GPW, so. They are to be thanked for that. Doesn't relate to us so much, but on the other side, on the Ocean Grove side, they're repairing Bulkhead around that playground in Ocean Grove. And they actually just, there's a very, very large tree that was right in the middle of that, so they just had to take that tree down today. They were. Changed on that thing this afternoon. And then what else did I want to talk about here? Just with the budget, you know, we talked about a lot of budget stuff tonight, you know, and it turns out that everything. Costs money. So it's like, if you want to leave the bathrooms open all winter, that's great. It just costs money. You want to have Latin Fest and Park Fest and things like that and Raleigh Park, they're great. People love them. They cost money. These outside groups want to have events and come to our town on the boardwalk. That's great. We let them do that, but as you've heard, this costs money. Based on what we discussed tonight and the and the budget. I am more in favor than ever of this resolution to make every expense over four thousand dollars come. Or whatever the dollar amount is gonna be, come to the council for a vote because as we go, there's so much that's happened in this town that has never come before the council. And it adds up and that's leading us to to where we are today with this budget situation. Finally, I do want to mention that there was this grounding in Avon. Tragic, you know, the the surf was pretty calm that day. It was actually very. I was kind of shocked about the, somebody mentioning anything about rip currents, I mean, it was just really, really calm that day. I talked to our chief lifeguards and they said, yeah, those people were near the rocks. They were either on the jetty, either they walked out on the jetty and entered the water or maybe accidentally even that way, or they just went into the water right next to the jetties. Please tell everybody to stay off the rocks, stay away from the jetties. People think it's the safest place because they they think there's this immovable thing to hang on to. But it is the one place, if there's no rip currents anywhere, there's gonna be one right next to the jetty almost always. So just tell people to stay away, don't swim by the jetties and stay off the jetties. Hopefully that will be the only tragedy anywhere in New Jersey this summer, and that is my report, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you. Got a few things to cover. First, I'll wrap up the three key infrastructure projects that have been going on for the last few months. Outfall pipe on Ocean Park, McCabe Beaches, the Outfall Pipe. As you all know, hopefully delivers stormwater to the ocean. The project started physically on April seventeenth, although it started planning and permits and executing. That part of the execution in the fall. We completed the project yesterday, June thirteenth, about two weeks earlier than the commitment date. McCabe and Ocean Park beaches were open last weekend, completing on June ninth. The big thing about the that and this whole project is we really avoided. I think a significant issue on promenade. That was the initial plan, Public Works, OEM, myself pushed back very hard on. Not utilizing promenade for entry and exit of all the equipment and materials. In doing that, we used Evergreen Avenue as our point of entry and. I'm an Evergreen Avenue beachgoer. I went to the Second Avenue entrance the last few weeks. I kind of actually found a nice change of pace. But as of yesterday, all beach operations are back to normal. Evergreen Avenue is complete. You might notice the. The orange police barriers up for those who go to Evergreen Avenue Beach. They're temporary. Last year, because that's one of our own entrance points for vehicles. The Moby mats were really getting ripped up last year, so we put up storm fence. We actually had somebody cut themselves on the storm fence last year, last summer, so. We're trying to figure out something that's a little bit more simple and elegant than those orange barriers because it looks like. Looks a little bit like overkill, so Public Works is working on that right now. So if you're not aware of that, so the project is complete. We'll hopefully we'll get something a little bit more toned down as it relates to a barrier, but we'll work on that. Phase two of the sore curving driveway aprons done. We've had a report out on landscaping. I I hope. What I've heard from most residents is they're happy with the with the work that was done, particularly on curbs. If you look at. You look at phase one, which was Bradley Boulevard, Burlington, Monmouth. Think Evergreen. The curb work really wasn't done in those projects and it, there's a real stark difference in. Phase two and phase one in terms of the appearance of our town. So I think. What we've done there is is a very good thing for the improvement of the town on the phase two sewer project. We completed the joint project with Fletcher Lake, Walton Bridge and. It needed a facelift. We might have a little ribbon cutting on that in the next few weeks. With the Fletcher Lake group, we're working on that, but our our chair has been out on medical kind of leave, so. Hopefully it'll be back in the swing here soon. So those three projects are kind of in the complete column, but we do have a few projects that we are initiating. The biggest is replacement of the Biazzi roof. The Biazzi Center. We had a kickoff meeting with the architect and contractor on June fifth. Greg and I, we expect to start work next Monday. We haven't got absolute confirmation of that, but it's not the nineteenth, it'll be the twenty-sixth. It's they're committing to a two-week project. And we're in the process of gathering a couple of bids for mobile remediation in case it exceeds. The allowable amount, so we're working on that right now. We do have, we did bring a role remediation guy in and I'm sure he'll get on the job. I don't know who else will. We will be summarizing some upcoming projects in the coming weeks. We've mentioned. The Lake Terrace Park project. We just want to get that kind of firmed out. We've got this Park Place project. We've got the Fifth Avenue project. We are gonna take the summer off from a road perspective and a digging of anything, so hopefully we won't have any disruptions. A couple more things. Eighth grade graduations tomorrow night, as Councilwoman Denova said. As she also said, the class came back from Washington on Friday, last Thursday. On Friday, Chief Guida, Council President DeMarco and myself spent about an hour with the students. We did this last year too. We talked about their trip. And then we really talked about careers in federal, state, local government, what responsibilities there are. And encourage them to engage in careers and government service, things like we put up a picture of the specials. That we just hired and said, this could be you in a couple of years because we hire specialists that are high school kids and early college kids. So, you know, we just try to encourage that with them and it was a it was a good session. Although they were a little bit tired, I think they maybe stayed up a little late when they were in Washington. Uh the hundred thirtieth anniversary last Saturday, uh a couple of people have mentioned new success, participation by our community over about four hundred people. When you look at who was under the tent and outside of the tent. Wonderful event on our promenade, it's a reflection of the spirit, unity and fellowship that I think defines Bradley Beach. I'm grateful to the leadership uh and the twenty-five volunteers who spent about fifteen hundred hours pulling this off. Um I I think it was a um, you know, a good way to continue our success in the summer of uh twenty twenty-three. Uh library of summer reading began June twelfth, runs through August seventh, the program's open to all ages. You can register through the library's uh reading challenge website. Uh adult Zen Tangle Color Workshop is tomorrow, Thursday. At five o'clock, this is use different colors to pop through tiles such as gel pens, graphic pens. Coral pens, et cetera, spaces limited and registrations required. The yarn circle is Wednesday, June twenty-first, invited to bring your own knitting and crocheting um to the library. Health and Wellness Book Club, Thursday, June twenty-ninth at six P M, first meeting of the club will establish its purpose and how it will operate. Club will be facilitated by uh Jake Naples, a Bradley Beach resident. And uh it'll really pull out interest in wellness. It's in partnership with Mayor's Wellness Campaign, it's also registration required. Recreation, um next senior meeting is June twenty-eighth from twelve to three at the banquet hall. I think that's the last meeting before summer, uh and also hopefully uh. In the fall, we'll be in Biase and they can go back to um back to normal. Summer camp starts June twenty-sixth, runs through August eleventh. Uh summer bachi league began first, began first week of July. Uh we've got a hu- a lot of the health and wellness activities coming up on the beach, salt soul yoga. As an example, uh we'll be holding a six-week soccer clinic uh on Tuesday night, starting on July eleventh. For the middle school students, uh which is pretty exciting. Uh Rec is also working on the second annual back-to-school bingo event for August, uh accepting school supply donations. That was a huge success last year. I think the most compelling story I heard last year was from the um Rec Chair. Who said that one of the kiddos who left the uh uh event said it was the first backpack they ever had. So uh I think this kind of work and this kind of um uh, you know, event is just super for the kids in our school. Uh we have, so that's uh that is my report. Um we will now go to public comments. Council President DeMarco, I'm so sorry.
No worries, the Environmental Commission um dedicated their last meeting to the adopted drain program. So they have assigned tasks to the commission members and they are getting that underway, and uh the land use board meets tomorrow. That's my report.
Thank you, again apologies, um I got wrapped up in my report, sorry. Um okay, we'll now move to public comments, five-minute limit and single instance. Any couple of comments, yes?
Reach, reach desk in six hundred third avenue. Good work, I held the white flag and maybe I got picked first.
Well, standing up help too.
Thank you, also thank you for the updates um going on in the uh town, especially with regards to construction. The beach, a lot of people were very concerned with newsletters, I think, were uh were were. Uh I just real, really quickly, thank you, I heard about a problem with um geese. I've had two white geese.
Geese, yes.
I've had two experiences in my life with them, one of them was as the environmental commissioner. I was tasked with another person to write a model ordinance for the construction of and maintenance of a golf course. I'd learned a lot about geese and how their problems they go off with. The only way that they found at work is around the ponds that they built is to have tall grass.
Riparian garden, yeah, yeah.
Okay, second experience, in two thousand and three, I moved to a private community. At the per- I had a house at the periphery of the community, a half a acre, about an acre and a half. Uh uh size behind our house. I never saw this many geese anywhere that I have seen there. The community spent a lot of money, they use fireworks almost on a daily basis, they had fog. They never caught the use.
Border collars, yeah, border collars, yeah, yeah, I've been to that mountaintop too.
My friend YouTube and I got together and I learned the way to do it. I bought a very fast, remarkably easy to control boat, radio-controlled boat. Now harassed them for about two weeks, I talked to somebody that lives next, lived next door, and then about two weeks ago, we were talking about. I said, what about the geese, did they ever come back? He says, screw it, odds. Oddly enough, they have not, once in a while some stop by, but never like they had before. So I would recommend a cost-effective way of doing this. It's a lot of fun, get some volunteers, buy them a boat for a few hundred bucks.
Captain's hat.
No more geese.
No, I appreciate it, no, I I've never heard that one before, yeah. But um we we did speak to the um, we did speak to uh the fishing wildlife and. We are trying to look at a riparian garden concept, so thank you, yes.
Ripper Holloway one sixteen, we're getting, just wondering on the status of the uh request for proposals for the sewer. For the aesthetic area, uh where we stand and update on that project.
Got it, Greg?
I haven't been able to even look at the material. Um given all of the other things, bad has gone to the wayside. Uh but I've gotta deal with it sometime in the next two weeks, because I think there are only three weeks left on on the item before an action has to be taken. So it'll happen soon.
Uh can I ask, how many was it, did you get, uh three, I believe? Thank you.
Yes.
Nancy Meadow, Ocean Park, I'm. Mister Webber, all those things that you said cost money, please just get rid of me. Why take on all of that? Uh Mister Herbach, it's my understanding based on what the the noble said, is that you're only here until the end of the month. Um which, thank you for being here. Um so I think you're overly ambitious in trying to do a P and L on special events that, how many years have I been asking for? I am so overjoyed that you finally get my point, and personally. It's not so hard, I'm old enough to have used green ledger sheets. If it can't be computerized, you take the amount that we saw, it's been at an event, and you put it down, we add them all up. You do not excel, you only use a pencil and green sheets. I was against the uh disabled beach access plan for this year, because I didn't believe that Bradley Beach could do it properly. And I sort of found doing it improperly would be a bigger insult. So speaking for someone who might be disabled with um mobility with their legs. Not talking about any other type of disability or back or something like that. I noticed that fifty percent of our ramps are on the opposite side of the handicap lockers. That is just typically the Bradley Beach way. A waste of smoke, just, just ridiculous. And then they say the locker is random, random seems to be our word, this year we no longer use the word assess. We we will get back to us, things are random, which also applies to this ridiculous website. Where here we were with an emergency of smoke, we cut and pasted somebody else's announcement. Again, where do I go? Oh, I know a building to go to. What services are there if I need them? Is it open? Our O E M that gets us stuck in, nowhere to be found. And it would be not, I don't know, it's the website, it's not in chronological order, it's not in alphabetical order, so I go with random. So again, I don't look at this as, our slogan is a family resort, I think we're a random resort. And where it's funny, it's really not.
Well, it's not.
Embarrassing, it's sickening, and I'm tired of my money being misspent. And the whole, it it's just, and then we hire consultants that steer us wrong. Why can't we, people that work here, that care and do the job properly? We are overstaffed, and yet we farmed out those lockers, that's ridiculous thing, and then it all has gone wrong. And then they just send out another, it just, I don't know how you can sit there and defend. And then to read an editorial last week, it had incorrect facts. Is to be more insulting during. And, you know, it's bad enough that these meetings are made to the public, but to have differences go out there in the bigger realm of the public. Is disgusting and vile, and you should be ashamed of yourself, thank you.
Uh Ms. Meadow. No, I'm sorry, that bag there? No, no, that is yours.
No, it's not.
No, Larry, that's the narrow that, oh, okay, never mind.
Sorry, it's a uh, it was a gift.
Oh. I think he has a gift.
Yeah, Nancy, it's a gift for you.
It's an O E M, but I, it has all, it has all the details for O E M, and I'm sorry, somebody if somebody else wants it, that's fine. I picked it up at the O E M, uh, yes.
It's a go-bag, a go-bag, no, because I don't know where to go. I don't know what to put in the go-bag, cause I don't know, so I find this really another offensive.
Yes, just.
Okay, all right. Um I'm so sorry, uh Linda Duckey through twelve friendly. Um I did find this listed in, I'm not even sure if it was by laws, with chapter five, twenty-three. And it says, it's under CFO responsibilities, and it's paragraph C. And it says, make monthly reports to the mayor and council of all receipts, expenditures, commitments and extended appropriations. Is that ever done?
No.
Why not? It's listed under their responsibilities. Okay. So.
Not down, I mean periodically, but not.
Then maybe we need to.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, good, good pickup, thank you.
Okay, good, and also on your um responsibilities, it says guaranteeing that all appointments and promotions. That'll be based upon qualifications and demonstrated performances. So the most qualified person for the job must be picked. I was just wondering about this poor man, thank you very much, you've been very, very patient with us. And you're leaving so soon, it's gonna take the next B A quite a while, I'm sure, to get up to speed. So we're gonna be quite far behind, but thank you very much for your work, cause we really needed it.
Well, let me just say that until Mr. Noble mentioned it, I didn't realize I was leaving on the thirty. So, so I I guess I'm being released.
So um I'd like to say that. And also, I wasn't really sure, it says C M E C, whenever we were told about the garbage disposal.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to hire a council or some kind of committee from the outside to commit and evaluate. We have no parking, we're already gonna put those big cans. You can't even put them in the street, you think people are gonna leave them in their driveway? I don't think so. So most towns that have those huge arms have no parking or a lot of parking, and they can put it further else. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Be back in five or six months, I mean, um did I just hear somebody, did I understand correctly, that we are contracting out and building a beach boxes now?
Contracting out the building of beach boxes. Some we build inside, some we go outside.
Okay, so.
Depending on the quantity and depends on a couple of things, but.
Real quick, I noticed uh my beach box one, or I call it beach box, sorry, beach locker. My beach locker, um you know, we're all concerned about ocean pollution and stuff like that. Well, they're using like a plastic kind of wood now, a a composite, and inside of my fairly, I guess it was. Fairly new beach locker, um there's a ton of plastic uh drilling, like uh shavings left behind. Um on the beach, so people are choose whose chairs are there, they're gonna pick it up, they're gonna walk down to the ocean. And all that plastic is gonna end up in the ocean. We're concerned about microplastics and pollutions. If you could have the contractor, please vacuum those out when they're done building them, it would be very helpful to our pollution problem. Thank you, thank you.
Any other, yes?
Going back to what Shannon brought up and what James was talking about, the cost of events that are not sponsored by the borough. So the events where they charge people to go in, the anniversary party, for instance, and the upcoming. Viewing of a movie in Raleigh Park, that non-members of the business lines are being charged thirty dollars per person. Will those fees be applied to the cost of having R G P W set up, tear down? The overtime, I mean, it's on a Saturday, I believe. Um are, will those fees be applied to that cost? Or are those fees going to the the line?
We'll have to follow, we'll have to follow, we can get your answer to that. And I can't answer, yeah, we'll follow.
I think historically, we have not uh charged a lot of these groups for the external groups. For example, I was involved years ago negotiating with a compassion group for Lobster Fest. We, the borough, did charge that for, please, uh D P W, uh even for damage to the property, you know. I don't know, they had stakes pulling up grass or whatever. Uh but I'm aware of a number of events, I'm not gonna name them, but where we haven't had a formal policy to recoup those costs. And that's one of the things I I asked for in that I, that motion I passed, I pushed forward earlier today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Uh Turcomwire six ten from the avenue. Um so I did hear about geese as well, I had a patient, she worked for the U S D D A and did wildlife management for the geese. They killed a lot of them, but she has protocols, so they can implement. So if you need a contact, I will get you her contact. She works out um less somewhere, and that's all she does is geese management. So I can get information. Um the next is, I really appreciate that we're doing questions and comments, and then you're answering, and now they're not just emails anymore. I really appreciate, this is my only time to actually sit up here and talk to everyone on about these issues, so it really feels good that you're talking to us. Um next is, oh, John had brought this up, uh the spending, natural amendment. I remember you, you were talking about a long time ago, did that get passed? Or is that still not hanging in the air? I don't remember if that got passed.
It was passed, but it's currently in the book, uh until, until we resolve the law.
Oh, did part of the lawsuit?
Part of chapter five.
Oh, okay, uh that was probably my next thing I was gonna do, uh since no one else is gonna talk about it, I'm gonna talk about it, cause it's really ridiculous. I just read both of the briefs, and I'm not a lawyer, I do watch a lot of Law &amp; Order, but. My favorite shows, but I I read those, there's some words that I don't understand, I haven't looked them up. My degree does not fall in that area, I know bodies and humans, I don't know legal stuff, but I read them both. And I am not a judge, but I I have to agree with Mister Cannon. And I I hope that the judge throws it back as soon as possible, so we can move forward. Um I know I'll have to wait till uh uh a trial, or the judge actually does the date, I don't know what it was, but. Um I urge the public to read the briefs, because one brief has facts, it's not personal. This is the law, this is what's going on, the other one is a crybaby not getting his way. And I wanna make all the choices for this place and make it unilateral, and I'm the king. That's what it comes on, guys, crying, I'm not getting my way, I'm in a sandbox and I'm throwing a tantrum, cause no one else wants to vote on the people I walk. It's ridiculous, and I hope no one outside of our town reads it, cause it makes us look ridiculous. It's long, it's weak, it's ridiculous, where Mister Cannon's brief is. Where Mr. Cannon's brief is short to the point, and had nothing but legal, legal, legal. It didn't say point fingers, this one's mad at me, this one's mad at me. It was just, it's such ridiculous, and I hope it gets resolved as quickly as possible, so we can move forward. Gather professionals, Mr. Farabak, thank you, you've been great, and I'm sorry for all these questions about the bills list. Unfortunately, we have a lot of transitions in the town. My wife enlists every single, um, gate, as we call them in our town, yeah, recycle gate, many gates that you may not be aware of, and so there's a trend on the sheets, that's more than likely why people have questions about this. Um, and, oh, one more thing, because I know Randy talks a lot, his hand is up here, and I just.
I saw.
I see, no, no, that's within my ear. I just wanted to read something, because I wanted to look this up since I was in this legal mode, and I wanted to look up rules of like, what can we say, what can't be said? And I just wanna let you know, Mr. Mayor, because you've attempted to, uh, cut him off. And as long as he is not threatening violence, not hurling obscenities, or attempting to take over the meeting, which happened here once, and nothing happened, so that was a terrible precedent. But he is allowed to have vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. That's awesome, he can vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasant. So just want you to know that, next time someone's talking to you about their tone, because last night you did tell two people to watch their tone. You don't have to watch their tone, just so you know.
You're absolutely right, absolutely right, thank you.
Oh, can I ask you this question about the geese? Can I just say something about the geese?
Yeah.
So, I know this through the Fletchulay Commission, they engage in, it's called egg addling. And what that is, is they're essentially oil the eggs of the geese.
Yeah.
That will make the eggs not hatch, doesn't do anything about the geese today, but it does something about the geese tomorrow, and then all, and the reason they do that, instead of just going and break the eggs, if the, the geese come back, and like, eggs are broken, they just go make more eggs.
Yeah.
And so this just bakes them out, that they just sit on the eggs, and they keep sitting on them, and nothing ever happens. So there, yes, and I don't know, it's not actually members of, uh, Fletchulay Commission, but they do, I believe they contracted somebody to do that at Fletchulay. And so they like to, but I don't.
They're a consistent contractor.
Okay.
Same contract, yep.
Uh.
It's goose control, isn't it?
Yes, um.
Goose control.
Goose control, that's it, yeah.
We have, um, on the screen, we have Randy.
Yeah, personally.
Thank you for unmuting me. Randy Benal, five oh six Third Avenue. Meredith, six weeks ago, I asked you for information on the sewer upgrades. And you committed to getting back to me with answers. And you never did, and I was just wondering what happened, why you didn't.
There was a borough-wide newsletter sent less than twenty-four hours after that, uh, discussion with a timeline and an update on the infrastructure project. Between that and the written responses from Mr. Farabak, I had no, um, reason to think that your inquiry wasn't satisfied. So if there are remaining questions, you can please, uh, direct them to Mr. Farabak, and he will make sure you get answers.
Yeah, but you never sent it to me. So you didn't, you didn't honor your commitment. So next, uh, Larry. Um. We've, we've had a vote of no confidence. And you were speechless. After the vote of no confidence. Are, are you still speechless? I'm, I'm, I'm being as, as pleasant and amicable as possible. But the fact that you have no answers speaks volumes. So you don't have any defense for your actions? Let me guess. Uh, I'll get back to you, Mr. Benal. Is that the answer? Or are you just gonna be speechless again?
Well, you seem like speechless, so I'll just remain scriptless.
Okay. But that speaks volumes. I hope that the residents of the town understand what's going on here. And, um, we're begging you, Larry, step down. You're, you've created so much damage to this town. We don't need another eighteen months of damage. Just step down.
Thank you, uh.
Uh, Thomas T. Coann, six twelve Third Avenue, I, I had one question, I don't know if it's for you, Mayor, or Mr. Fernbach, but, um, I know they're gonna do landscaping on the curves, you're correct, the curves did come out nice, and there were nice comments about paving. Uh, but what I'm concerned about is that they did the sewer line, and we have a sewer cleanup, which is set at the correct level for the landscaping. But our water service box is now buried, and we can't find it. So will they be checking all the water service boxes? Because when you have a, an emergency, and, and the water, you know, you have to shut the water off in your entire house for an emergency issue, and you can't find the water service box, that's a problem. So I'm just trying to give you a heads up for everybody in town, that this isn't gonna be a problem.
Right, could you follow up with?
I'll raise a question of the engineer.
Yep.
Yeah, um, and you know, Mr. Frido wants to call me, I'd be happy to talk to him about it, but we just like to save angst in the future. Um, I, I did, uh, I, I did have a question, Mr. Fernbach, because you brought up the special master for affordable housing, and I've been in this room numerous times, Land Use Board, back to two thousand seventeen. And I was wondering, is a special master going to request the affordable units at three oh one Main Street that the town never got credit for? Or the affordable units at the Autotech property, which the town never got credit for, and I was in both of those Land Use Board meetings asking for those credits. And I asked to make those credits to be about ten units. Um, are you familiar with that?
No.
Wow, so I guess I just have to keep bringing it up until somebody. Um, if you need me to take a meeting on affordable housing, I'd be happy to, um, you know, uh, I'll, I'll offer my servant.
I'm not familiar with the details of what the planner and the attorney who are representing the municipality are doing, so I don't know where those things stand.
Yeah, it just like seems like we're the only town that doesn't get the credits that we deserve, that we can bank, so that we can show Fair Share Housing Corporation that, you know, we, we've met, and, and that's my concern. I think, I, I hope we didn't squander these opportunities. And, and I did have another question, Fernbach, about, um, in my notes, I have that we increased ratables. And I, I know that, uh, Mister, I wish, uh, the gentleman was here, Mister Clinton, but I'm gonna ask you. Um, in my notes, I have a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in additional rate of this thing here. Now, does that appear correct to you?
Monmouth County is different than at least nineteen other counties in New Jersey in the way assessments that plays. Um, in Monmouth County, every year, there is an increase in the value, assuming the market increases in value, and there will be an annual decrease. That simply has, uh, an effect on essentially equalizing what the rates are throughout all of the other municipalities in the county. A certain number that you just used of a hundred and fourteen thousand, which is, I think, a hundred and fourteen thousand seven fifty, um, is the essential value of construction that took place in addition to the other values of the municipality that increase.
Yes.
Um, and that's good, a hundred and fourteen, six ninety-five in my notes, that was great.
And that's, and that's the value, I'm, I'm sorry, that is the, uh, tax dollar value of the construction that has taken place.
Hmm, absolutely, Somerset County does it the same way, but my question for you is, is like, if we were at eleven point six, and I'm estimating this one fourteen, six ninety-five, to be approximately one point five percent. So would our increase really be thirteen one? Have we not garnered this one fourteen, six ninety-five?
If you hadn't had any construction in town, yes.
Okay.
Right, I mean, it's just. But because of the new construction, that is a valuation that you have to remove, because it is now an added valuation to the community, and was actually a contributing factor to, um, assessed, um, what they call added assessments at the end of two thousand twenty-two.
Sure, but, but, but we're kind of lucky to have that money, because our increase will even be more, have we not, have we not garnered that?
Yes, it's softened the blow.
Yes, thanks very much, I appreciate it, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Uh, so we would kind of, I do for that. Um, Mr. Farabak, I wanna apply your, thank you for all of your help, um, doing this. I have a question, just in terms of your history and your experience. Um, how many years have you been involved in being a BA or in the financial?
I've been in local government since nineteen seventy, and I've been in this kind of a role since nineteen seventy-four.
Okay. So, knowing what a mess you're in, and I applaud that you're trying to make heads of tails of it, to me, just speaks volumes that whomever the candidates are for the BA need to have equally as much experience as Mr. Farabak, because he is having a hard time trying to straighten out the mess that we have had ourselves in. So for us to accept anybody less than the qualifications of Mr. Farabak is really a, uh, uh, an injustice to this town. And I want you all to continue to fight, um, and continue to push, and Mayor Fox, please, please work with everybody. You know, regardless of what your intentions are, what your hopes are, we are all here together, we all need to work together. We need the best.
Absolutely.
And, and when it comes down to this next decision, we need somebody that can do it. I still question why we are paying the previous BA as a QPA, because obviously she couldn't do anything with the budget and left us with a mess. And why we're still paying that, I think, again, we need to look at that line item. There's no reason for seventeen thousand dollars to be being paid out for that to just keep us where we are. So with that, please fight. We will fight with you, we will continue to question everything, and please, help us continue to save some money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there's nobody else on the board, no more?
First, I wanna compliment the DVCA and committee that organized and posted the hundred and thirtieth anniversary gala. It was fun to see so many people in town involved, and the feedback that I heard was really good. Second, I wanna thank the town for completing the last page of the current sewer project by repaving Fourth Avenue and contiguous side streets. Company did an eventually job. My neighbors now feel like a valet, uniquely different participants. Many people have been wied up in meetings, and I apologize. Thank you for your concern to those who did. My wife and I have experienced three tragic and significant passings in our family in the last five months, and it caused me to spend much of my free time involved in family legal matters. That's not the only reason, I've been listening. I've been on the phone, I've been on Zoom when I can. The animosity, personal attacks, and lack of comedy expressed continuously makes this an event I do not wish to attend and hurt them. New is bad enough, but at least I can do necessary work while listening. It concerns me greatly, the divisions in the borough I love. There is absolutely no way I would want to ever have coffee with people who speak in certain manners. But if I needed to, as most of the council does, the acceptance of their role would require you to have an open mind and not consider yourself the smartest person in the room. I have one friend who uses that moniker, he deserves it. Also, I would never consider using some of the derogatory physical and mental references on other people in the public setting. If I did, I would, I would apologize, it would be below me. I would also like to say the fact that it seems many choose this forum to question our mayor's motives, mental acuity, personal choices, as well as making him the one that's always wrong. That should bring you the board, this is a view of very narrow-minded people. When I ran for council, I experienced vulgarity directed at me. My running mate and I faced lies, accusations, and innuendos that came from the lowest form of misinformation and deceit. Politics. But I happened to know I was surprised, shocked, and disappointed by the people that continue to speak these things. Did it deter me from wanting to help the borough in public service? No. I look to redouble my efforts where my skills and experiences can share our borough's unique settings with others. I have no agenda. I feel very comfortable discussing items where my insights and backgrounds can help. I learned a lot about Larry Fox during that run, I've learned more since. I wanna say I admire him, and I consider him and his family to be my friends, and I hope that continues. I completely understand the process of seeking legal advice regarding some council actions. I did read the briefs. I do see two differing points of opinion, I look forward to seeing what the judge thinks. I do not agree with several of the moves by previous or current council members, but we elected you, we trust you, you're running our borough. You have to be here for the veteran of the borough, you wouldn't wanna take on this guy. The loudest and most repetitive voices bringing up issues are not just loud and repetitive. Sometimes they're right, sometimes they're wrong, but they're bringing things up to be discussed, we should honor them for that. I'm not alone in my thoughts, but one of the things that does constantly come up, it is the malicious exemplary, I'm sorry, the malicious and non-exemplary appointee brought to our committee's department. We have experienced professional, open-minded leadership and officers. I have no doubt that more than a handful in town would believe anything different. But I would ask why? Transparency is key in that we have. The disrespect for any members of the force is unacceptable. I have a strong faith and trust every day that we're protected by ladies and gentlemen in the department. In closing, I encourage the council to keep up your work. Keep trying, keep fighting for all of us, we appreciate it. It is the veteran of the borough under our current form of government we've all elected, you to look at. Our election cycles do allow us to make changes. And we look forward to a particular platform or agenda to move forward. As council and section has discussed, there are other forms of government, and if there are, they should be brought to the board and discussed. Thank you very much for your time, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Because you're.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we'll, um, oh, I'm sorry.
So Jean acquired six ten, oh. Six ten Brinley Act. Uh, just wanted to reiterate a quote from Tom Gavin to Jane Denoble. Your fan club will have three years to pass around, and Mike and Yella does come January. He wasn't so sweet.
Thank you, um, we will now, um, go into executive session, um, we appreciate everybody's time tonight, and have a good evening.
Uh, thank you. I can't get, oh, okay. Uh, she thought, um, yeah.
Not doing your thirty, if you don't want this. Very nice. Yeah. I've seen it, so I have. I mean, unless you have a lot, not everyone here. Thank you very much. Okay, that would be nice to do. No, I, I understand.